We do this on every Thursday. This is part of our response and it's also kind of our commitment to neighborhood gardens and to organic food.
They could volunteer by going to our website at CultivaLA.org. We have a tab for donations and also for volunteers.
With the people that are coming here, we are also doing the social distancing and we are doing a system called Grab and Go where they, people here just get their bags and they leave. They don't like do registration or any of that. For those people that can't come here physically because of their disability or because of their age, we can take those by appointment. They can go to ucielio.com and maybe they can like talk to or call our office and in that way we can set up a delivery time for them.
There are new rules for riders of public transit. Take in a virtual cooking class. And here's our first story on public art. All this and more up next on City Beat.
LAX and local transit lines are adhering to new rules. Masks are now required when passing through the airport or getting on metro buses or trains. The rule is also in effect for Los Angeles Amtrak lines. Even some airlines are requiring them in flight, so be sure to check as part of your pre-travel preparations. The new rules are part of helping prevent the spread of the coronavirus. Are you an artist? Council District 8 is giving locals the chance to create designs for public trashcans. The district is looking for designs that are vibrant and inspiring to help keep the community clean. The chosen designs will be featured on public trashcans throughout South LA. Submissions will be accepted until May 20th and the winner will be selected May 22nd. La Plaza de Cultura y Artes held a virtual cooking class. The classes were an effort to help students learn how to cook the cultural food and flavors that are native to northern Mexico. Maite Gomez-Rejon of Art Bites led the class called Sabor al Norte, giving students a great and tasty activity during the stay-at-home ordinance. Councilmember Herb Wesson is calling on Angelenos to take into account communities of color when reopening business and public spaces in Los Angeles.
People of color are being hit by this pandemic physically, mentally, and financially. These same communities are less likely to have health insurance, paid leave to support them when they're sick, making the economic and health consequences even more severe. These protests have called for easing restrictions that were meant to slow the spread of the virus, but people are forgetting about those of us who the virus is especially affecting. Doesn't our health matter? Doesn't our safety matter? Don't our lives matter?
Even though Councilmember Wesson feels some trepidation around opening LA prematurely, that did not stop him from holding his annual Mother's Day giveaway in Council District 10. Hundreds of boxes and bags were handed out safely feeding dozens of SoCal moms and their families.
So here we are, Mother's Day weekend. We're gonna be giving out special Mother's Day bags to the mothers in this district. Food baskets. We've been very active this whole crisis, you know, trying to give people the things that they need. So today is more of a fun day. It's a happy Mother's Day. It's a hang on in there. We're gonna be moving forward and just to show them our appreciation.
I in particular, and I'm sure all the people that are here today, greatly appreciate his efforts and everything he's doing to make sure that his district is taken care of.
During this coronavirus, people need everything, but I think the most important thing that they need is reassurance that their government is on the job.
I think he's doing everything, you know, that he can do at this moment. I mean, we're all just like from day to day trying to figure out where to go next, you know? But in the meantime, they are trying to make sure that families are, you know, being taken care of as much as possible.
The city closed down, we opened up. It's moments like this where government needs to stand up and stand out and help its constituency. Whenever there's a challenge in this country, we rise to the challenge. This will pass as long as we stay together and help one another. We're a very resilient people. We are survivors. It's what we do here.
Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez took a traditional route on her recognition of Mother's Day. She spent the morning giving out an elegant delicate gift meant just for mom.
Today we're giving away free orchids and Kalanqui that were donated from growers that unfortunately because of the pandemic have been unable to sell them. So there were several growers that came together through a friend that said, hey, these are, these flowers are gonna end up in the landfill. We have no place to sell them, no place to distribute them. And so they just contacted us. I said, I know how to put them to use. And so we made sure to assemble very quickly a flower giveaway here in the district. At a time when everyone is struggling, what better way to enjoy this small gift of flowers to help brighten up your day than through this effort? So I'm very excited about it. And you know, the line around the block, the cars started lining up over an hour and a half ago, you know, two hours before the scheduled opening is an indication of the enthusiasm from the community.
I feel like the orchids really represent like the beauty of what it is to be a mother and so delicate and it takes a lot of work to take care of it.
For me, I just wanna try and do everything possible to continue to ease the challenges that families are experiencing at home. And you know, flowers are a luxury. They're one of those things that, you know, they make you feel good. The fact that we're able to offer this for our families here in the Northeast Valley, I'm really proud that we were able to make this happen.
Every week, we're reminded of communities in LA whose faith and traditions are rooted in the principle of charity. This week, the MTO School of Islamic Sufism celebrated its holiest day of Ramadan by giving away care packages to nurses and first responders. Take a look.
It's a day of just giving. You know, it's on International Nurses Day. MTO has decided to really give back and support nurses and hospitals and medical clinics and anywhere where there's frontline workers and first responders.
You know, we're really grateful. Most of us are very privileged and, and you know, we can't imagine how difficult it is for those people, the hospital personnel, you know, who are working day and night, not just the nurses and doctors, but like the people who are cleaning, the people who are supporting them. This is our way of giving back to the community in a way that we feel is necessary during this time. And it's really a time of coming together and doing good.
Even though today is one of the holiest days of Ramadan for the Islamic faith, you could be celebrating this with your loved ones, you have chosen to make this day about others on International Nurses Day.
It's really, really great to see those hospitals and staff getting the support that they need. I mean, they deserve it times 100, right? They should be safe. They should feel safe. They should work in very safe environments. They should have the gear that they need.
So in working together, cooperation, collaboration, love, kindness, community, staying together, staying safe, and helping those who we can, we could further expand upon the care of those frontline heroes.
Over the last few weeks, Angelenos have rallied to the aid of neighbors, coworkers, and largely to the aid of strangers. And yet for some, the hardest part of enduring the pandemic is not the financial straits nor food insecurity that has come with it. For some, the hardest part is the emotional and mental stress of navigating these new circumstances. So in recognition of National Mental Health Month, the good folks from LA Medical Services have dropped by with some useful tips on how to keep your mind healthy. The coronavirus, COVID-19, brought with it a trifecta of bad news for health, for finances, and now as it turns out, for mental health as well. I'm delighted to welcome Joanne O'Brien and Dr. Laura Kokinda from LA City Medical Services. Dr. Kokinda, as a species, how are we at adapting to such stressful and dramatic changes in our lives?
You know, humans are actually quite resilient and quite adaptable, which is the good news. Lots of things that psychologists are recommending now is first of all, keep your routine to some degree. It's gonna look very different. That's something we all have to accept, but try to keep a routine. If you're working from home, try to get out of your PJs, get into some sort of work frame of mind.
And we don't mean your daytime PJs from your nighttime. We actually mean actual get dressed.
At least to some degree, yes.
I love that whole idea of not being perfect. I think all of us are, you know, obviously not necessarily understanding what's going on, or if we do understand what's going on, not understanding where it's gonna go. And then feeling as if we have to be brave and bold and strong and a teacher and a mom and a worker and if you're working or remaining, but you can give yourself a little bit of a permission slip during this time to not be that perfect person?
You can always give yourself that permission slip within reason, but now especially, it's not about winning the pandemic. It's about getting through the pandemic, keeping everyone safe, healthy, balanced. That's what you're looking to do.
There are some good things. I see more families together outside walking, you know, where you didn't see that before. Enjoy the moment of being together with your family because we're always so busy usually.
This seems to be a really good time for people to pick up new pastimes and new skills. I know that that's one of the things that a lot of people have decided to do in order to make this time valuable personally. You made banana bread.
I did. I'm on the list of the million other people apparently who've been making banana bread lately, but it's, that goes back to the coping skills. You wanna keep yourself busy. It distracts from the negative thinking, the worry, the stuff that's not productive.
So when all this has passed and you know, we look back, how has Los Angeles done?
I'm completely impressed on how Los Angeles has handled it. I think everybody really worked together. Everybody did what they were supposed to do and you can see it by the numbers. So if you just watch those and if you're data driven, but it's been pretty impressive how the whole community has come together and helped each other. I think that's what's been amazing.
For many of us, wandering a good museum used to be a great escape from mounting personal stress, but even now you don't have to wait for Lacma or Mocha to reopen. Chances are truly imaginative and timely art is just around the corner.
This global pandemic has almost brought people together and made people understand what's true and real in life and understand people's priorities. So this art signifies that it doesn't matter who you are, race, ethnicity, gender, that everyone is all here for one purpose, to try to defeat that invisible enemy. Sometimes it's hard to convey words and illustrations can really put a lot more thoughts and meaning into what people are thinking. This artwork, you don't have to say much. You can look at the picture and because everyone's dealing with this global pandemic, they kind of relate to it right away and understand, you know, the problems, the conflicts and how we can almost perfect and keep increasing the way we're looking at this world. We're going to defeat it and we're going to come out of this stronger.
Join your kids for a concert via Facebook Live. Donate to the City of Angels Food Drive. And the Uncorked Wine Fest goes virtual. All this and more up next on Virtual Things to Do. Round up the youngins for a musical event with Kids Imagination, a Southern California-based children's musical group which writes and performs their own music and theatrical live shows. Their web series will include original content for toddlers, preschool, K through 3rd grade, and children at heart of all ages. And they are bringing the act to Facebook. This live interactive concert happens Saturday, May 23rd beginning at 11:00 AM. Don't miss Kids Imagination on Facebook Live. It promises to be a real hoot. Join artists King Klave, Leo Dan, and Eduardo Mentoret in the Miami Symphony Orchestra as they come together for a high-octane virtual concert. Cuidate Equitente, hosted by Nora Mila and Rafael Sigler, is a two-hour musical extravaganza produced by Uno Productions and the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, SHIRLA, the largest immigrant rights organization in California. Cuidate Equitente drops Saturday, May 23rd at 4:00 PM. Uncorked is taking the party to the internet by throwing its first virtual wine fest. Enjoy a curated selection from quintessential wines shipped directly to your door and get a special login to be part of our virtual party on Saturday, May 23rd from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. The event will feature talks with the winemakers, behind-the-scenes video from the wineries, live music, interactive trivia, and fun times with friends from all over California, Nevada, and Oregon. You can find tickets for Uncorked Virtual Wine Fest by visiting their listing on Eventbrite. Encino Little League and Carrying Counts are proud to co-host the City of Angels Food Drive on Sunday, May 24th. Please bring unopened, non-perishable food to Encino Little League at 5120 Havenhurst Avenue in Encino. All items will be collected via trunk for contactless drop-off. Proceeds from the drive will benefit Sova Food Pantry. The City of Angels Food Drive happens Sunday, May 24th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And that's a look at some virtual things to do. Here at Channel 35, we stay committed to bringing you the best information possible during the COVID-19 outbreak. Remember that you can sign up with NotifyLA to receive emergency alerts. To sign up, just text your zip code to 888-777. You can also find reliable information about the resources available from the city of Los Angeles at these websites. PublicHealth.LACounty.gov, Coronavirus.Lacity.org, or at Emergency.Lacity.org. That's it for this edition. I'm Maria Hall Brown. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Erica Brown. The Age and Mastery Program is a 10-class program designed to empower older adults to make small but impactful changes in their lives. The program was developed by the National Council on Aging and is currently being coordinated by the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging throughout various locations within the city and county of Los Angeles. On average, 25 to 35 people attend each class with topics ranging from exercise, finances, living wills, medication management, community engagement, and healthy relationships given by expert speakers. The Age and Mastery Program encourages mastery, developing behaviors that will lead to improve health, stronger financial security, and overall well-being. By participating in this program, you will make impactful changes that will enhance your quality of life, get real incentives and rewards by taking small steps that can help you thrive and live masterly, and also meet new friends, provide support and encouragement to your peers, and become more involved in your community. By now, you may be thinking, how can you participate or even bring the Age and Mastery Program to your community? If so, please contact us at the Department of Aging at 213-482-7252 for more information.
Good morning, and welcome to the special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Thursday, May 21st. I'm Nuri Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Puskaino.
Puskaino, present.
Mr. Sadio.
Present.
Thank you. Harris Dawson.
Here.
Weezer absent. Corretts.
Present.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue.
Present.
And Wesson.
Here.
Fourteen members and a quorum. Madam President.
Madam Clerk, just run through the agenda.
Madam President, would Council like to send all items forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order next.
Items one and two are items for which public hearings have been held. However, since this is a special council meeting, another opportunity for public comment will be provided. And for the record, an additional community impact statement has been submitted for item one from the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Council.
Madam Clerk, can you please read -- I'm sorry, we're going to move on to the -- to public comment on today's agenda. Can you please read the call-in information for anyone who would like to speak?
Yes.
On today's agenda? Go ahead.
Thank you. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call (669) 900-6833 and use meeting ID number (459) 499-150 and then press pound, then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. And let me repeat, call (669) 900-6833 and use meeting ID number (459) 499-150 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, would you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public that wish to call in this morning?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. Actually, excuse me, this is a special meeting, there is no general public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again, sorry, off-topic, the President will cut you off, and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Yesterday, we took an hour and a half of public comment, the large majority of which was on the budget. Today, we will take an additional thirty minutes total of public comment, all of which will be on the budget. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. If you are also listening to the council meeting on your computer, Channel 35, or other device, please turn down the volume on those devices immediately. There is a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast on those devices, and it will cause confusion if you continue to listen on those other devices. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Members of the public, there are two items on today's special agenda. You have one minute to speak on each item for a total of two minutes. Just go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. What is your name, and what items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. What is your name, and what items would you like to speak on?
Hello?
Please state your name --
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Daniela. I'm calling from CD 13, and I'd like to speak on items one and two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, so as someone who's never really paid attention to local politics until now, I must say that what I've seen thus far from this council is downright immoral and despicable. I can't believe that during a pandemic, in a time where crime is decreased, the mayor's priority is to make sure that the LAPD get their promised overtime pay increase, as opposed to, oh, I don't know, making sure that people get housed, providing cash relief to struggling people who've lost income, building adequate tenant protection so that people don't get evicted a year from now? I mean, these are human lives at stake, and you as a city council haven't done even the bare minimum to keep people safe. But increasing cop pay is the way to do it? We don't need to pay the murderous racist LAPD more than what they already suck up in resources. And let me tell you something. My mom is a housekeeper up in the Palisades, and her boss has people over for dinner every single night. He doesn't care about their health, but not once have the cops shown up to his house. And the cops here in LA and other marginalized communities have gone to not only sweep up their homes, but to beat them up in the middle of a pandemic. That's unacceptable. And that is why I am opposing the mayor's budget to increase cop pay, and you should too. As a council, you have a responsibility to protect the people who are most at risk. The cops are not one of them. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
It's hard to know who it's going to. My name is Stevie Shaw. I'm with the Los Angeles Tenant Union. I'd like to speak on items one and two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I called yesterday and was pleased to hear more than ninety minutes of comment from the public in opposition to the mayor's budget proposal. It's clear that groups are united, folks are united across the city against raising police and law enforcement's budget, which is already over $3 billion, to more than $5 billion in the middle of a pandemic. It would never be appropriate to do, but it's absolutely atrocious to even consider right now. Los Angeles somehow has this reputation as progressive nationally, and absolutely nothing about this would be progressive. We need rent cancellation. We need, as the previous person said, cash assistance for the more than half of Los Angeles folks who have lost their jobs. We have hundreds of thousands of people who could potentially be facing eviction once the moratorium lifts. There are so many things that we can name: social services, keeping restrooms open at public parks overnight, which actually doesn't even cost money. We are failing our houseless neighbors. We are failing the folks who have lost their jobs. We are failing each other. And policing, increasing policing, again, with the deadliest police force in the nation, in a city that already has the largest jail population in the world, there are so many statistics that are so troubling and upsetting to sit here and rattle off. And it's unconscionable that what we're considering doing to allegedly solve this or even address this pandemic is to further terrorize black and brown communities and have people live in fear when they're already at risk of death from the global pandemic that we're in. So please reject the budget. Please cancel rent. I think that's all I know how to say right now.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What is your name, what items would you like to speak on?
My name is Ethan Metcalf. I'm speaking on items one and two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. I called yesterday, and I'm calling in again today to oppose this morally corrupt budget that the mayor is trying to slam through in the middle of a pandemic. We have a crisis in this city of housing, and health, and now jobs, with so many people unemployed, but it seems that your priorities as elected officials is just to throw more money at the LAPD. Crime is down. We don't need this. I look at this budget and my stomach turns. I don't recognize the city that I'm living in. And I'm so appalled by the lack of leadership from all of you, especially the folks on the council who are landlords, and looking at you, Nuri, and how inappropriate it is that you have blocked tenant unions on Twitter, and that you clearly have no desire to hear from folks who are organizing to just stay alive right now. I mean, we need housing right now. We need people off the streets. And it seems like all you care about is maybe your own personal interests, what benefits you. It's just, it's morally unconscionable what's happening right now, and our mayor is doing the wrong thing. You as city council members need to stand up. And if you don't stop this, the people will. The people will not have this budget. This budget is not going to pass. And if you don't stop it, the people will. And we don't need more cops. We don't need more care in our communities. Right now, we need healthcare. We need housing. We need, like people said, cash assistance to folks who've lost their jobs. It's just, it's morally so corrupt what's going on. And like I said yesterday, I don't even have a council member to talk to me about because of your own corruption. I live in CD 14. Weezer is corrupt, and you guys are now just clutching your pearls, acting so upset about it. You've known he's corrupt the whole time, and you haven't done anything about it. You've stuck together like a pack of thieves while the city has been hollowed out by austerity and corruption.
Thank you. Your time is up. Please move on.
It is so long, and now you're about to shut.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Please --
Hello?
Yes, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Gina, and I'm calling from CD 13. I'm calling to speak on items one and two on the agenda.
Okay, you have two minutes.
And I'm calling to --
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I am calling to oppose the $3 billion budget that Mayor Garcetti could be using that money to house the homeless, protect small businesses, provide school resources, build stronger tenant protections, expand mental health care, provide free transit. And I just don't agree that it's being spent wisely when hundreds and thousands of us are unemployed, we cannot pay rent, and you guys are just using that money to kill everybody in Los Angeles, basically. You guys have shut the doors on us and basically told us that you don't care about us. So I'm strongly urging you to block the LA budget against LAPD. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Lionel Maris. I'm speaking on agenda items one and two.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yes. I'm from CD 6. Thank you for having me, President Nuri Martinez, calling because I would like for the city council and the mayor, Mr. Eric Garcetti, to reconsider the budgets for fiscal year 2020, 2021, because it may harm the less affluent Angelenos. And due to undue influence on LAPD and LASD, they have a lot of influence over the city council with their lobbying efforts, and they take a big chunk of the budget, whereas other essential, essential city services are being cut or affected. And I think that the city council should take a step back, rethink, reconsider, and revise the budget so that all city services are provided with equal funding, so that the less affluent Angelenos and taxpayers will not be affected, and so they continue to get the services that they need. That's what I think. And I learned that in my MPA class at Cason about public labor relations and negotiations, and I know that LAPD has a powerful union representing them. We need to lessen their influence, because I'm, you know, it's, they're asking for too much money. And I understand that law enforcement, it's important, I respect that, but they have too much power and influence, and we need to lessen their influence. Thank you very much for having me today, President Nuri Martinez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
This is Judy Brassman. I want to speak on item one and two.
You have two minutes. Go right ahead.
Well, I'm calling because I think you should delay the vote and rethink your decision of how to allocate funding. You know, that much money for police makes no sense right now when there's so many services that are needed. So I, you know, hope you will delay the vote and rethink this with a lot of community input. Thank you.
Please, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Annie and I'd like to speak on Item Number One and Two on the agenda. I'm asking the city council to block the LA budget. We need, I mean, we're in a pandemic. We need to reallocate all this police spending toward services we actually need right now, which is affordable housing, housing the unhoused. We need mental and physical health care, improved transportation, education. We need assistance for small businesses. I heard the Alavera Street businesses calling in yesterday saying they're struggling. They're struggling to stay alive and to pay for rent, you know? And also the park services, they need wildlife protection. There's so many other important things that our community needs and deserves, and it's not the cops. Crime is down. We need to stop rewarding the police for their abusive and racist and unprofessional conduct. You know, this is, if the mayor genuinely wants to improve this city, he would invest in the people and social programs, and those are the things that would improve our city, not police. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name's Nicole. I'm in Woodland Hills. I just want, I want to speak on Item One and Two.
Okay, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what everybody has said before. I'm calling to delay the vote. I think the $3 million that is being appropriated to go to LAPD should be reallocated to services like housing and community investment and parks and rec and emergency management. Project Room Key is not working and it needs to be expanded. The LAPD, crime is down, the LAPD is going around handing out tickets to people downtown and harassing unhoused residents rather than helping them. And I just want to put this on everybody's radar. The shelters are closing. There's several shelters that have closed, animal shelters, and they're turning animals away and they're ending up on the street. So I think that it is preposterous to expand the LAPD's budget right now. And I think that we need to delay this vote, the people need to stay, and where that money goes. And yeah, that's what I'm asking for. Thank you so much.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Sarah Goldsike and I'm speaking on Agenda Items One and Two.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
So in the mayor's proposed budget, 54% of the city's general funds are going to LAPD, providing them a total of $3.15 billion and more overtime, and this is while crime is going down. Why do they need more overtime except to increase the harassment and violence of Angelenos and in particular, Angelenos of color? At the same time, the budget requires almost every other city department to take budget cuts and furloughs thereby limiting necessary services like education, despite the fact that children are struggling with the transition to online learning and thousands require resources from LA USB. Mental health, despite the stress of this crisis and the fact that mental health intervention has proven to be a better use of funds than policing. Emergency management, we are literally in the midst of a public health emergency and climate emergency, which is only expected to breed greater public health crises in the future. And a failure to prepare for that is, just lacks complete foresight. Housing, despite that tens of thousands remain unhoused in the middle of this pandemic. Councilmember O'Farrell has allowed park rangers to keep bathrooms closed despite the fact that washing hands is one of the most important things anyone can do to prevent the spread of COVID-19. And the city's failure to provide adequate shelter to all so they can shelter in place and socially isolate is honestly embarrassing. Our city is forcing over 50, is facing over 50% unemployment, an estimation of 42% lasting employment, and no rent suspension or moratorium has been passed. We need a people's budget, not the terrible police state budget. You represent us. You represent the approximately 3,981,000 Angelenos that are not police. You are failing us as leaders. If you pass this budget, you're failing to do your job to democratically represent Angelenos. And we're asking you to propose an amendment so that this can go back into committee. We need a budget that gives us services, not sleep, that gives us care, not cops.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for calling in. Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Yeah, Adam Smith, and I'd like to speak on One and Two.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
[Music] Mary delayed the budget vote today. They shouldn't get anymore. It's so obvious to see. LA spends too much on the LAPD. Stop, stop funding LAPD. Stop bothering at the violence in the community. 200 million more for an occupying army. Stop, stop, stop funding LAPD. Seriously, delay this vote and help push for a people's budget, not a budget that rewards state violence and is inherently anti-black. Speaking of money and police violence, Mike Brown should have turned 24 yesterday, but he didn't because of Capitol's reliance on white supremacist cis hetero patriarchal violence to protect the class interests of people like Donald Trump, Casey Wasserman, and Mitchell Farrell at the expense of folks like Mike Brown, Kenneth Ross Jr., and Nelly Carrato. Mike Brown didn't turn 24 yesterday, but I turned 40. Woo! And I'm asking you to remember Mike Brown. And if you go to the pinned tweet at @AdamOfTheSmith, you can commemorate that by donating to the Stop LAPD Spying Coalition. What up, Mike? Mike Bonin. Hey, Mitch, my dad's phone number is 413-247-5355. Western Mass represents.
Thank you very much for that. Let's move on to the next speaker.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Gigi. I'm wanting to speak on Items One and Two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was looking over the budget and I think really the root of this problem is that we're, we need to kind of drastically reorient our priorities. For example, I saw that LA has $160 million for affordable swim lessons from the Olympic Committee. I just think that seeing as we don't know when the pools are going to open up again or if it's going to be safe to open up the pools anytime soon, we should maybe be using that money on more vital services. And then speaking of the Olympics in general, the budget for the 2028 Olympics is $7 billion. But Tokyo is currently at about $20 to $30 billion over budget. And if all the taxes dry up, LA will be teetering on the verge of insolvency. So I think that just, you know, not only, I also agree that we need to definitely defund the police. That is like one of my top priorities. But we also just need to rethink what we're spending money on as a city. And I think that we need to cancel the Olympics in order to do that because we can't be spending money on, you know, random Olympics projects and we can't, you know, just be putting these money towards random projects that the Olympics wants us to put project money towards when we have things that are a lot more important to do in the city. And, you know, just if we, if we allow the Olympics to come, then we're going to have to have the city be put under a national special security event. And that's going to increase police militarization even more. And listening to all your constituents, you can hear that we do not want more money to go towards the police. Like, that's what the people have been saying. We've been calling in and saying, we don't want more money towards the police. And so why would you bring an event to our city that would just increase police presence by federal law when we should be defunding the police and that's what the people want? So I just want, you know, we need to make sure that we don't put extra money towards the police. We don't put any money towards the police and that we cancel the goddamn Olympics because we cannot have that in our city.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Norma Garcia, need to speak on Item Number One.
Okay, you have one minute to speak on Item Number One. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, city council members. I am Norma Garcia, a merchant of Olvera Street since 1965 and a member of Olvera Street Merchess Association. I support the request of rent and can forgiveness as a citizen, El Pueblo Bages submitted yesterday for Vivian Bonzo, Gregory Berber, and Christina Mariscal. As today, I am in debt of $18,000 in rent, property tax, and other bills related to the business. Please, help us. Your vote today can make the difference. You can be remembered for saving this historical landmark for future generations or you can be remembered for ending 90 years of legacy. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, budget niggers! All items, please!
Two minutes. Go ahead.
Excellent! Good morning, council criminals!
I'm the Honorable Gil Sadio.
Now we're going to talk about the insolvency of the city. The city is bankrupt. Look at the budget numbers. The Chinese have all our money. Please, Mr. Weezer, give us back the $6 billion. All we need is the Swiss bank account number. Thank you for that. And then we have 54 cents out of every dollar. For what? To beat up people with black sticks? The LA cops are going to go into CD 8 and CD 9 and they're going to beat every nigger that has ever lived in that city if this budget passes. Please, Mr. Sadio, help us. I'm reaching out to you to stop this budget crisis. Mary is out of control. She's taken over too much power. She's become a dictator with pancake makeup on and a big fat ass. Please stop this budget, Gil. We need your help. You're the only hope left. They've all absolutely taken over. For a code crisis, Councilmember B is a bitch. And then Weezer has now become Mary's bitch. John Lee is Mary's bitch. What? What? Did I hear? I'm on my time, okay? So, again, I firmly oppose this budget, even though I actually love the budget.
Your time is up, caller. Thank you very much for calling in. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Alana. I'm from CD...
Go ahead.
I'm from CD 13. I'd like to speak on Items One and Two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
In addition to echoing everything that all of the constituents are calling in concerning delaying the budget vote and rethinking the budget in a way that defunds substantially LAPD, I wanted to point out to all members of the council the manners in which LAPD has been showing a rampant disregard for people's lives and the severity of this virus and this pandemic during the pandemic. We have seen alarming actions from LAPD, including their refusal to wear masks. Perhaps most disturbing is video of LAPD officers inside a Chipotle explaining that they're not going to wear masks because they come into contact with nasty stuff all the time, which shows just a basic disregard and a basic misunderstanding of the need for face covering. We have a police department that is not competent. They are not trained. They do not know how to protect the public. They don't even understand the basic science that this council and the mayor has taken pains to make very clear to the public that the need for face covering is to protect others, not just to protect themselves. I also think that it is disturbing that the chief of police, LAPD Chief Moore's wife, publicly bragged about leaving the state, violating the orders on travel to go to Arizona to flout the orders. LAPD is showing a flagrant disregard for our safety, for our health. This department needs to be restructured. They need to be trained. Officers are violent. They are corrupt. They are hurting people. They are terrorizing our communities. They need to be defunded. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hello, my name is Peggy Lee Kennedy from Venice and I'd like to speak on Item One and Two.
Okay, you have two minutes. Go right ahead.
I am very concerned about any increase in the LAPD's budget, especially to cover overtime, providing security around the Bridge Home. I have personally witnessed what is currently happening in these special enforcement zones where law enforcement is ticketing unhoused people for violating ADA requirements on sidewalks that don't even have ADA access. I mean, it's so ridiculous, the amount of enforcement that's already going on and to increase it makes no sense continually. I have heard members of this council and the mayor say, "We can't police our way out of homelessness." Well, that's exactly what you're doing. You're policing homelessness continually. So much money is being spent on the LAPD that could go to housing people. That's what we need, housing for people, not law enforcement on people. Only in extreme measures should LAPD be called in, not because somebody's having a mental health crisis. They should not be called in. They taze people who are having mental health crisis. It does not help. And you'll have 12 law enforcement officers on three unhoused people who aren't even in crisis. They're just, their tent is too wide on a dirt path. And what's actually happened in these special enforcement zones is they've moved people. They're not curing homelessness. They've moved people to other locations where the citizens complain and call the police. I guess because they feel like either they have no other thing to do about homelessness or they don't care. They just want to eradicate them from the face of the planet.
Thank you.
Please, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Joseph O'Conne, like to speak on Items One and Two.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
So I just want to echo what all the public comments so far have been. And to note that you're hearing 100% opposition to this budget from your constituents. So whatever you do today, we will either understand it as a complete disregard for what the people of this city need and have told you they need, or you have the opportunity to block this budget and advocate for a budget that represents the actual needs of the people. But I also want to take a moment to look specifically at Item Number Two and to suggest that instead of instructing the city administrative officer to refine furlough plans and look for other places where you can make savings, to just cut the LAPD's budget. That'd free up a ton of money that then you could use for more important things like housing, education, health care, the things that this city actually needs. And it's worth, I think, pointing out, as people have pointed out many times in these comments, that it's not just divestment from necessary life-affirming services, but an investment in a service that nobody in this city needs, the Los Angeles Police Department. Putting more money into the Los Angeles Police Department is only going to make this city less safe for black folks, for Latinx folks, indigenous folks, unhoused people. All of the city's most vulnerable populations are endangered by the continued expansion of LAPD police power. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, this will be the last caller, and we'll have satisfied 30 minutes of our public comment this morning. Go ahead, next caller.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm speaking on items one and two.
Okay, go ahead. You have two minutes.
All right. Thank you. I am not happy that I'm the last caller because I think there are so many people in this city who haven't gotten a chance to speak. But we have here, like, I also listened to the public comments yesterday, and I heard hundreds of people call out this budget as racist, draconian, absurd. The 15 people on the city council, 14 people who can, have the opportunity to invest in the services we need right now to address the many multiple crises in this city. We have a homelessness crisis, a housing crisis. We have an environmental crisis, and we have a Medicare crisis, and we're funding the LAPD. I'm hearing people cry on these public comments, everyone, because this is so life and death for literally everyone in this city. I was on the Budget and Finance Committee call last week, and only one city council member, Mike Bond, had pointed out that maybe we don't have to invest in the LAPD, and that doesn't have to be taken as a given. It is absurd that only one elected official is calling out like the hugest elephant in the room. You are elected to represent us, not to kill us. And the decisions you make this week will have life and death consequences for thousands. I advise this council to block the budget, to send it back to committee, and to actually take real time to reinvest in these services we need to vulnerable communities. When the city attorney's office presented the budget to the finance committee, they said, "People, vulnerable communities, will have services taken from them. We will have fewer services to the most vulnerable communities if we invest in the LAPD the way that we are." And because we are choosing to not to give them raises, more people will be harmed by this. It was very clear in that presentation. Thank you. Block the budget.
Thank you. Members, that concludes public comment for today's meeting. Okay, members, I'm going to give some opening remarks, and then we're gonna have, we're gonna hear from Mr. Kukorian, and we have several presentations this morning from staff who's here in council chambers. Members, when I started my tenure as council president in January, we all knew that we had challenges ahead of us, but none of us foresaw the largest pandemic in our lifetime coming. It has been devastating for so many families in our city, especially those who have lost loved ones and those who are struggling with economic fallout. We've had to readjust our council meetings and our committee meetings and the way we do business here at City Hall. But where other legislative branches have fallen short in their legislative duties, this city council has continued to deliver for the residents of Los Angeles. In the last two months, we've passed significant and historic legislation in response to the global pandemic. Whether it was paid leave, recall and retention, strong tenant and worker protection, we've adopted a family-first agenda and set an example for other cities, as well as push the state and federal governments to act in places where we could not. In addition to the legislative work of this body, we have continued to ensure that our constituents have the resources that they need to make it through this crisis. Collectively, as a council, we have provided more than 500,000 pounds of groceries to feed tens of thousands of families in our districts, 86,000 PPEs to protect our medical frontline workers and first responders, more than 78,000 individual meals to residents, first responders, medical staff, and seniors, 500,000 diapers, 83,000 whips to moms and children, thousands of bottles of gallons of hand sanitizers and surface disinfectants, and over 600,000 in grocery gift cards, 60,000 face coverings for our residents, not to mention our staff members who have been in our communities, volunteering to deliver senior meals or staffing our food drives and toiletry diaper giveaways. It's been amazing the work that our staff has been able to do during this pandemic. And this is only a highlight to some of the work that's been done throughout the last two months. I want to take a moment to thank all of you and your staff for your hard work and for stepping in when you saw where we needed to fill a need in our districts. There is no doubt that we are going to be facing a difficult fiscal year, but nevertheless, we show up to work every single day. Shortly, we'll hear from Mr. Kukorian on the budget, but even in difficult years, this council has delivered by focusing on the most vulnerable communities in our city. As we start the new fiscal year, it is important to keep in mind the people who need us the most right now. Working families, those living in poverty, communities of color that have long been forgotten, seniors and children. I know we'll continue to work hard to deliver for these, for the people in need, just like we've done in the past and what we will continue to do during this crisis. Mr. Kukorian, I would like to turn it over to you, sir, so you can start discussions on the budget. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you for putting this discussion into that extremely important context. I think it's an important way that we should start and hopefully finish this discussion. Members, we're living in the most extraordinary of times, and because we're living through the most extraordinary of times, this is an extraordinary budget process. And I want to talk for a moment about that before we begin. Because normally, over the last eight budgets that I've been your budget chair, today would be the day that we present to you a budget resolution that has, that includes all of the well-considered amendments to the mayor's proposed budget that the budget committee members have pored over over the course of dozens of meetings with scores of general managers and other staff members. We would have analyzed the budgets of each department carefully. We would have proposed countless revisions and follow-up reports and other things, as you all know. And today would be the day that we would all be taking those up. This year, none of that was possible for a couple of reasons. First, the very practical reasons that the council president just described. Because of the COVID-19 crisis, we couldn't realistically have the kind of budget hearings that we've traditionally had. Committees were necessarily shut down. We couldn't put hundreds of people into the council chambers to consider the budget. So just for that reason alone, we couldn't do the work that we would normally do just because of the coincidence of timing of when COVID-19 hit relative to our budget schedule. But even if we had been able to do that work, even if we had considered all of those, had those lengthy hearings that we typically have, the truth is, the level of uncertainty over all of the assumptions that we rely on for our budget is greater now than it has ever been probably in the city's history. It's uncertain for many reasons. First of all, we've had the most devastating economic decline in any of our lifetimes. And with that economic decline comes a steep decline in the city's revenues. And the truth is, none of us know how long that will last, how deep it will be, how quickly our economic recovery will come. None of us knows that. And so we can make some assumptions based on the information that's available to us, but the truth is that our assumptions right now are no better than the assumptions that the mayor was making at the time that he prepared this budget. And in fact, in some respects, the information that we have before us indicates a worse budget situation than was the case when he prepared his draft budget, and I'll go into that in more detail in a moment. We also, as the council president just laid out, we've been required because so many other governmental agencies, frankly, have failed to quickly respond to the COVID-19 emergency, the city stepped in. In many areas where the city has no real jurisdiction or responsibility, but we stepped in because our constituents needed us to stay alive in some respects, to stay afloat economically, this council jumped in at extraordinary cost, extraordinary expenditure of money that had not been budgeted at all. So we still don't know what those costs will end up being by the end of this fiscal year, let alone what costs will need to continue to occur into the coming fiscal year. And then perhaps one of the biggest unknowns is what our federal government is going to do to help this city and cities across the country who've suffered this massive decline in revenues. To what degree is the federal government going to step up and help cities deliver the most essential services to our constituents that they rely upon from local government? We don't know yet. We also don't know if they do that, when it will happen. So for all of these reasons, there's tremendous, tremendous uncertainty about this budget. Now thankfully, we're in a better position to respond to that than we were a decade ago during the Great Recession because this council has worked so hard for the last eight years to build up the largest reserve that this city has ever had in its history. And certainly, that will help. But I want to remind everyone, it took us eight years to build up that reserve, and it's one-time money. If we dip into that reserve, which we must, we will, and we're proposed to do that under the mayor's proposed budget, and certainly we will in coming fiscal year, that money is gone once it's spent. It doesn't get replenished. And so I just want to remind everyone that that's not some continuing source of revenue that we can count on for continuing expenses. So I just, before we go into our presentations, I just want to highlight a little bit the degree of the economic crisis as we know it now and what we're, the scope of the challenge before us. As all of you know, our revenue sources in this city, for the most part, are highly economically sensitive. Sales tax, property tax, business tax, hotel tax. All of these are areas that, when the economy turns down, mostly, they react very quickly to economic downturns and our revenues decline. And I'll just give you a few examples of that. In March of this year, just as the pandemic was starting to hit, sales tax receipts for the city were down 10% from the prior year. In April, they were down 17%. Temporary occupancy tax, our hotel tax, in March was down 11% compared to the prior year. In April, it was down 77%. Parking occupancy tax was down 12% in March compared to the prior year. In April, it was down 78% compared to the prior year. So you can see that the revenue situation is dire. What we heard in committee, and what I think you'll hear shortly from our presentations, is that as difficult as the mayor's proposed budget is in terms of cuts, proposed furloughs, hiring freeze, and the other issues that are very difficult for all of us to grapple with, the truth is that what we know now is that the revenue projections that underpinned that proposed budget were too optimistic. Because the Office of Finance projects that even under their best-case scenario, we're going to need to reduce revenue estimates by almost $50 million. In a worst-case scenario, with a slow recovery, with a decline that goes deeper than what was expected and takes longer to recover from, it could be as much as $300 million or more in revenue shortfalls, which means the only place that that can come from is in cost reduction and service reduction. So I just want to start our discussion with that very dire reality. I want to remind you all that we have faced dire realities in the past, and we've overcome them. We've gotten through it, but it's going to take continued, very, very difficult choices, continued discipline, and a sober-eyed look at the situation that's before us as we move forward. So shortly, we're gonna be, or next, we're gonna be hearing from our CLA and our CAO, and they're gonna go into much greater detail on some of the issues that I've addressed and others. They're going to talk about the projected information that we have about the economic situation of the city, and they're also going to talk about, and then we're gonna also hear from the mayor's budget team about what is in the proposed budget that's before you. But because of all of this uncertainty, and because all of you are absolutely going to want to weigh in, and collectively as a council, we're going to need to take this budget and make our own assumptions and our own revisions in it, and we are going to need to do that, I'm going to ask, with the council president's permission, that at the conclusion of our discussion today, that the budget be returned to the Budget and Finance Committee, that any proposals that members would like to make today or in the coming days relating to the budget be returned to the Budget and Finance Committee so that we can take that up collectively, evaluate the proposals, evaluate proposed changes, and bring those back to you, back to this council in a vetted way between now and July 1st, when the fiscal year begins. Now, what that means, though, is that by operation of the charter, it does mean that on July 1st, the mayor's budget that is before us would technically become the budget of the city. But as in every other year, this council makes changes in that budget throughout the fiscal year. And we've often made changes in the budget even before the fiscal year begins. So while that technically is the operation of the charter, I just want to alleviate any concerns about that because this council retains control over what happens in that budget beginning on July 1st. We could make drastic changes in the budget that would take effect on July 1st. And it will be, it's my intention, and I hope all of yours, that we will continue to work vigorously on this budget throughout the month of June. In fact, the Budget and Finance Committee is now going to be up and running with regular meetings again. We'll be meeting, starting with a meeting on June 8th, followed by June 15th, June 22nd, and June 29th. And we will take up the budget in a much deeper way with all of your proposals as well, so that we'll have an opportunity to consider those prior to the fiscal year beginning on July 1st. So that will be my proposal. I will propose that the budget be returned to committee, that all proposals relating to the budget that are considered today will be returned to the Budget Committee as well. And I'd ask that you approve item two, the Budget and Finance Committee reports from our meeting of May 11th. And with that, it's now our opportunity to really get in-depth into the facts that are confronting us. And with that, I'd like to invite up, with council president's permission, if we can hear now from the mayor's budget staff, Matt Zabo and Diana Mangioglu, who are going to present on the budget.
Mr. Kukorian, I will go ahead and do that without objection on item number two. I'm sorry, item number one. And we're gonna have our presenters come up to the table. Why don't we start with the mayor's presentation? Why don't you come up to the table? After that, we're gonna move on to a presentation from our CAO and our CLA. I'm gonna ask members to please hold their questions until we get through the two presentations, and then we're gonna take questions from our members. Okay, with us, do you want to kick it off, Mr. Zabo?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President and Mr. Chairman. Matt Zabo, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Garcetti, here with Diana Mangioglu, the mayor's budget director. We will run through a presentation and then be available to answer questions from you. We will run through a presentation and then be available to answer questions from you or the members. Before the council is the mayor's proposed budget for fiscal year 2021, $10.53 billion budget, $6.68 billion general fund. As Budget Chair laid out in detail, this is a budget unlike any other that we have faced in developing and proposing to the council. Hold on one second here as the presentation is... Why don't you just, why don't you just do it? I'll just call for next slide. I'll just call for next slide. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So we'll go to the next slide. So what we had to do is, the budget development process, it really is an all-year process. And the guiding principles that went into this budget, which was, which necessarily required us to revise dramatically in the final weeks before presenting the budget to this council, forced us to reassess and reset our priorities and guiding principles. Basically, we had to look at what are our most basic and critical services and protect those, and then we needed to put the city in a position to respond effectively to the COVID crisis. The guiding principles included maintaining multi-year fiscal solvency, and I will talk about that in a moment, maintaining critical services to the greatest extent possible, preserving public health and public safety services, continuing investments towards our homelessness crisis, avoiding layoffs, and adhering and living up to our contractual and legal mandates. The reason that I have, that we have maintaining multi-year fiscal solvency as our primary guiding principle in this document is that we are in a position right now of extraordinary uncertainty, as again, the Budget Chair laid out. We are in the middle of the first wave of the pandemic, which is having tremendous impacts on our revenue and creating extraordinary costs. There may be a second wave, there potentially may be a third wave. The budget that you have before you will, is not even facing the full brunt of the impacts that this crisis can have. We have yet to, to see the additional pension impacts that this budget, that the stock market will have for next year's 2021 budget, in, in addition to adjustments that are likely to be made to the assumed rate of return for our pension systems. And so therefore, we had to make significant cuts, but we did not rely on significant, on, on the reserve fund or on the budget stabilization fund to balance this budget in anticipation that we may need to do that in the coming months and years. Next slide, please. Just by way of background, members, the, the budget process begins in earnest in November when the departments present their proposals to the mayor, and we, and the CAO's office and our office begin analysis of those proposals. Also, our office has met with each of you and your, and/or your staffs to get your input and priorities, and year over year, as we have for the past several years or every year of this administration, we have efforted to make sure that those priorities are covered in the budget that the mayor proposes. After all of that, after that process was completed and the COVID crisis in the middle, in the beginning of March hit, we had to drastically reset all of our assumptions and all of our plans up until then. The impact, based on the projections that we had at the time that we were getting ready to finalize the budget, required us to revise down our spending plan by $230 million. And again, this is, this presents the best effort, our, our best effort to preserve the most critical services, given that we had to make such dramatic cuts in such a very short period of time. Next slide, please. So what you'll see in the budget before you is a budget that protects critical health, public safety, and homelessness services in addition to accessible housing, which are required by a series of agreements and settlements that we've entered into. The police and fire budgets, as you've heard over and over, are maintained at the same levels of service. There wasn't additional, significant additions. We just funded the police and fire department to the level required to maintain the level of service that we have in the current fiscal year. We have also fully funded our Care and Care Plus program. That will continue at the same level of service. We have added in a few areas, one of which is custodial services to ensure a safe working environment. We've also added medical assistance to jails. And again, as I stated earlier, one of the guiding principles to this budget, although there is numerous cuts and other reductions, we did not want to trigger any layoffs at this time. We also have a significant homelessness effort of $429 million. I know there has been discussion over what is in that 429 million, how we're counting it, but that includes all of our spending that the city is spending, city departments are spending towards homelessness, all the money that we're sending to Lhasa, the city properties that we year over year submit to use for homeless properties, all of the dollars spent through HHH, and then the state dollars. I will say on homelessness, this, the 429 million that we're proposing should increase dramatically given federal, additional federal and state assistance for the purposes of assisting the homeless in the COVID crisis. We have already received, or have been awarded, rather, $15 million in emergency solutions grants from the federal government, $31 million in additional CDVG for the COVID crisis, and additional $19 million in state funding for the COVID crisis. Next slide, please. Other than the priorities that I just outlined that were protected to the greatest extent possible, virtually all other services will be impacted, including very critical services citywide. Our capital, we had to cut back on our capital improvement programs and our capital projects. We were not able to fund graffiti abatements at a level that we would have wanted to fund it. We had to make reductions in concrete, concrete streets in our failed streets program, in our tree services program. We are, we are complying with the Willett settlement on sidewalks, but we are reducing the amount to, to the minimum required to comply with that settlement. So that is a reduction of about $10 million for sidewalks. And other programs like our animal sterilization fund and our gang reduction and youth development program also took cuts. Our effort here, again, was to not cut entirely or eliminate any particular portion of a department or a program, but to try to manage the reductions across the city. But that also meant that if all existing programs, other than those identified, were being cut, we did not add any new programs, any new requests for funding. Vacant positions were, many of them were eliminated. And even in, in areas of high priority, as I said, we cut the gang reduction and youth development program, including all funding for, for summer night lights and some of our climate programs as well. High priorities for the mayor, but we just were not in a position to fund them at this time. Next slide. Two of the most significant means in which we are achieving the required savings to balance the budget, given the information that we were presented with in March and April, include the hiring freeze and furloughs. The furlough program applies to all civilian employees at a rate of 26 furlough days a year, one furlough day per pay period. The exceptions to the furlough program include the Department of Building and Safety, the Library Department, the Bureau of Sanitation, and then the specific classifications which are exempt from furloughs include detention officers and police service representatives in the Police Department, advanced providers, advanced EMS providers in the Fire Department, and correctional nurses, nurses in the Personnel Department. I do want to point out that the $139 million in savings is in addition to the $42 million in savings, which we are counting on from having a hard hiring freeze. Many of the departments have made a request to the council and to the Budget Committee to allow them to manage within their departments, and one of the ways that they would manage to the cut, to the required reduction, would be to hold positions vacant. The reason I point this out is that we have already counted those savings. We are counting on not filling vacant positions for the entirety of fiscal 2021, and that is over and above the additional $139 million required from furloughs to balance the budget. Next slide, please. As, as Mr. Kocorian pointed out, one of the positions of relative strength that we find ourselves in facing this crisis compared to the last financial crisis of 2008 and '09 are, are the condition of, of our reserves. Our reserves were woefully inadequate in 2008, 2009, 2010, and that immediately triggered draconian cuts that we are still having to live with to this day, 10 years later. As of last year, our, our combined reserves, including our budget stabilization fund, our contingency reserves, our emergency reserves, and our mid-year reserves were 8.52% of general fund revenues, almost $560 million. Next slide, please. Due to the current fiscal year impacts, the revenue loss of the COVID crisis and the anticipated continued revenue loss of next year, for next year, we are proposing a budget that does, that does fall short of our goal of at least 5% reserve fund. Last year, we proposed a budget with 6.2, or adopted a budget with 6.25% in our reserve fund. That is down to 3.64% this year. Our combined reserves, again, fell from 8.52% to 5.8%. So it is critical, as we move forward, that we protect the reserves that are already, in our view, at a dangerously low level. Next slide, please. At the same time as we've been managing the loss in revenue and the necessary reductions to services, we have had necessary enormous expenditures directly in response to the COVID crisis. We have, and this council has, has approved, $155 million in general fund and special fund loans for a number of efforts. And I'll just go through those briefly, but I do want to remind the council that these are loans which are a general fund obligation and must be paid back in order to make the, our reserve funds, our reserve funds whole, and it should be the, the highest priority. We have a $25 million set aside for a senior meal program, which will serve 17,000 seniors, that was set aside by a motion by the Budget Chairman. We have a childcare program. We have 18 sites that have been stood up with a capacity to serve 250 children for our frontline responders. The council has borrowed or transferred $10 million from the reserve fund for a micro loan program that has already served almost 100 businesses. We've stood up a medical relief facility at the convention center that has 250 beds that was, that we've allocated $1.7 million towards. The largest expense and the largest ongoing expense has been our COVID-19 testing program. This is obviously not an area that is in the normal course of services that the city delivers, but it was also something that, in the mayor's judgment, was absolutely necessary to respond to the crisis. And so we have, to, to date, spent $43 million on testing. We've done 342,000 tests. We are currently testing between 10, or conducting between 10 and 15,000 tests per day that are city-funded. Countywide, there are about 20,000 tests per day. So the vast majority of all testing happening in the county is happening due to the city's program. Next slide, please. We've also incurred significant costs for PPE for city operations. That's to protect our frontline, our frontline workers. PPE for unsheltered individuals, PPE that we have purchased that we will be selling to, to hospitals to cover their costs so that the hospitals aren't competing against the city, that's not competing against the county, that's not competing against the state. And then we have also dedicated significant dollars towards homeless services, including our shelter program and our rec centers and Project Room Key. Project Room Key is not a general fund obligation. That is being paid for through the, the additional state dollars that we received specific to COVID response for, for homelessness. I would like to draw your attention to the remaining balance, and I'll, I'll say two things about this. Number one, of all of the spending that you see before you on these last two slides, all of the expenditures to date are, are either FEMA reimbursable, are covered, are able to be covered by another source of funds, or can be covered by the coronavirus relief fund, which is a fund, which is the nearly $700 million that the city of Los Angeles received from the CARES Act for COVID response. So although we have spent a significant amount of money and put the general fund on the hook, we should be able to recoup all of that. We are facing a cash flow issue, and it is possible that now, and is likely, rather, since we are down to $15 million in the bank, ongoing costs, required costs for the COVID response may require us to come back to the council and ask for additional borrowing from special funds to maintain the ongoing costs. Next, next slide, please. Moving forward, as we, as we realize reimbursements from FEMA, as we're able to allocate some of the dollars for the, for the COVID relief fund, we have a number of recommendations for priorities for funding moving forward. I will say, and I know the CAO will touch on this as well, but it is explicit from Treasury that the $694 million cannot be used for revenue loss replacement. So we cannot use that, those dollars to fill our budget hole. We can use it basically in one of two ways, direct COVID response costs and for the secondary impacts of the COVID crisis, meaning the impacts to our business community, to our restaurants, to our renters. We can use it to alleviate the financial burden that the COVID crisis has caused, but we cannot use it to, to balance our budget directly. The mayor's office does recommend, however, that in the event that city revenues do come in above budgeted projections, which we do believe is unlikely, or in the event that federal or state funds are provided to compensate for revenue losses, that our, our priorities should be, number one, to pay back the loans. We have to do that. We also have a reserve fund, as I said, which is dangerously low. We really need to get that reserve fund up to 5%. But I will say that the mayor does very much wish to restore service levels by canceling furloughs if that becomes possible. If it's, if we can find a way to realize that additional revenue or cost savings in other areas that can offset the cost savings of furloughs, we would be supportive of canceling those furloughs at the right time. And then beyond that, additional funding for our liability accounts and our one-time capital projects would be recommended. That concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions, should you have them?
Thank you, Mr. Zabo. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions from any of our members on the presentation from the mayor's office. We're, we're going to also hear from our CLA and the CAO right after this presentation, but I first wanted to give members an opportunity to ask questions of the mayor's presentation. Members, anyone? If not, I'm going to go ahead and move on with our next presentation. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a question. Mr. Ru, was that you? You have a virtual handup?
Yes, Madam President, I just had one quick question.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding, regarding the COVID-19 spending snapshot, I think it was page eight, about the loans, loans from the general fund and special fund loans, when does the loan need to be paid back? I'm assuming by the end of fiscal year or?
Our position is that those loans should be paid back as soon as the reimbursements come in, but in terms of, in terms of a deadline, I'm going to have to defer to the CAO for that. We, the fund, the special fund in which we drew from, has a significant reserve, and, and so we might be able to have a little bit more time with that. The reserve fund really should be replenished by the end of the fiscal year. The reserve fund really should be replenished by the end of the fiscal year.
But there's no legal requirement or fiscal requirement on the loan?
With regards to the Building and Safety Trust Fund, so there's no particular deadline, but the longer that we take to repay the loan, the more interest is collected. And so we have to repay back, repay that loan with interest.
Great. And just a quick thing, the COVID-19 testing, did you say we did 42,000 tests so far?
No, we've done 342,934 tests to date, as of yesterday.
That makes more sense. Okay, I heard, I heard the number wrong. 392,000. Okay, great.
42,000, yes.
Oh, 342, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rue, Mr. Sadio? Okay, I'm going to move on to Ms. Rodriguez.
Madam Chair?
Yes, there you are. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, a couple of things, and thank you so much, Mr. Zabel, and I'll, Madam Chair, I guess I'll reserve some comments later on when I'll get an opportunity to weigh in on our perspectives, but with respect to questions, I'm, you know, pleased that we are really stepping up, as the president indicated. This entire council has been extraordinarily generous and responsive to the demands and the needs, but there are limits for our generosity, and I note that, for example, there are certain areas, for example, the medical relief, the COVID testing, a lot of our activity, health and hygiene, seems that these are responsibilities of the County of Los Angeles, perhaps the state, maybe the feds, and I'm just interested in terms of us being reimbursed from the county, state, or the feds with respect to some of these that go beyond our scope and our legal responsibility. I know that we have weighed into our moral challenge, but in terms of fiscal review of this, there are some areas that are beyond our scope, and what are the prospects for reimbursement on that? So that's one question, Mr. Zabel. The second question is, what's the back end on the loan? I know that there's a cost of interest and money costs money, but at times where you don't have money, spreading out these loans to the max provide us an opportunity to continue to maintain our ability to serve the public and then make our, our progress towards paying these loans. So what's the back end date or schedule, or is this undetermined or yet to be determined with respect to the loans? Two questions.
Sure, I'll, I'll take the second question first. The reason that we chose the Building and Safety Enterprise Fund is that they, that particular fund has a very large reserve, so we had the ability to borrow a significant amount from it without impacting services directly at the Department of Building and Safety. As, as Deanna had mentioned, our goal is to replenish that as quickly as possible, so as we would not, so as not to accrue additional interest costs. The, the costs and which, the expenditures that we are making, we are careful to ensure that they are either FEMA reimbursable or have the ability to be covered by other dedicated sources of revenue. We have, almost all of the costs that you see on the page before you are FEMA reimbursable. We also received confirmation from the Treasury Department that we can use the COVID relief funds, that's that $700 million, as our 25% match. So the city, at the end of the day, will not be on the hook for any, for any dollars. So we're really talking about a cash flow issue. And it is obviously our goal to get the dollars reimbursed as quickly as possible. They have, we've already submitted tens of millions of dollars of requests for reimbursement from FEMA. The, as it relates to testing, I want to thank you for that question because it is our view that testing should be the responsibility of the County Department of Health Services. We, there was a need, and the mayor asked us to meet the need, so we established, we then stood up a very aggressive testing program to test as many people as possible, as quickly as possible. We are in conversations with the county currently. The county did receive, well, I'll back up, the city has received no direct funds for testing. The county, through the CARES Act, received $300 million for testing. So we're in conversations with them right now for an appropriate schedule for the county to take over the testing program which we, which we stood up, and we intend to do that as, as quickly as practicable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Zabel, for the presentation. In line with the, with the question that Mr. Sadio tweeted up related to testing, when we look at the population of the county and the city, and you look at the number of tests that are being administered, we're clearly administering the lion's share for the county. And with respect to that, our fire department obviously was the first to plug the gaps with those services for the administration of the testing sites. Have we fully withdrawn and proposed all the full withdrawal of our city support in exchange for the county actually coming in? What, what does that timeline look like so that they could then front those costs without us having to constantly readjust our, our economic situation right at this time?
Yes, thank you. The, as, as you cited, our, our fire department is staffing each of the city sites, the city drive-in sites for testing. That is, that is part of our, our plan moving forward to either have other county resources take over the administering of the tests, or moving to a different model that does not tie up our fire department. We are, we are looking at options for contract staffing. There is a volunteer program that you may know of that is supporting our, our testing sites. They, I expect that we will submit funding requests so that, that, that program can be expanded to take over some of the roles and duties that our fire department is currently filling. But that is, that is a presently and ongoing and immediate conversation that we're having with the mayor and with our partners at the county.
Yeah, in, in terms of, you know, again, I know we've rolled out in the city a number of testing site locations, but just disproportionately, I mean, it just, it appears when you talk about us administering 10,000 to 15,000 tests, 20,000 daily citywide, we're clearly carrying the load for the county again, and it's just, it, it's one of those things that I know we have to really start holding other entities accountable in partnership for the support that we're, you know, we've plugged in a lot of holes where there was failure to, to scale up as quickly as, and, you know, and again, this is a, this is both an acknowledgement of how quickly we responded to the pandemic, and I'm proud of the men and women of the fire department and LAPD who took on roles that were not traditionally assigned for them, but we, I get it, we had to do what we had to do. But now we're looking at the fiscal impacts of how we're having to plug these gaps, and I just want to make sure that we're being aggressive in pursuit of a transition plan that takes them out of those roles, because we need to make sure that we're not continuing to offer the support for the balance of the county where the other municipalities are failing to do so. But thank you for that, and I look forward to our ongoing transition out of that role.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfeld, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah.
There you go. Go ahead.
Sorry. You missed my opening. It was, it was brilliant, and people laughed and cried.
You can start again if you want.
With the moment's gone, I can't, I can't go there. But I do appreciate Matt, you and the team, and all, all the work that you guys are doing on this, on this budget in this, in this horrible crisis. I did want to ask a little bit about the, to drill down on the reimbursement issue. For example, for testing, it was 43 or 40, 40-something million dollars of cost for the testing. How much, what, did that cost include the, the salaries of, of the firefighters who were working there?
So we are able to request reimbursement for the overtime costs from FEMA for the firefighters that are working on the testing sites. We are also allowed to charge the base salary of all employees that are dedicated to COVID response activities to the COVID relief funds, and, and we intend to, we intend to do that. We're asking the CAO to take a full account of all costs associated with COVID response and to charge those costs to the COVID relief funds.
And, I mean, that's a really important point, because that, that, I know we cannot use the, the funds for filling our budget hole, but those are costs in some ways that we can offload.
Correct.
So when the 40, just the specific answer, the, the 40-something million dollars for testing, that number, did it include our staff costs?
That number does not include staff costs, no. Those are costs being absorbed by LAPD, and on a, I believe, a bi-weekly basis, they are submitting their, their costs to the CAO for accounting purposes for, for reimbursement. So that, that is just the cost of the tests, just the tests themselves.
Right. So, and similarly, like at the rec centers for the recreation parks, our police that are there, those are, those are costs that don't get factored into the, the cost of that COVID center, but it's certainly a, a reimbursable cost, and in effect, would lower the, the overall amount that we have to spend on, on police and fire in the sense that we would be getting those, that money back, right?
That, that's correct. And just for your information, on the, on the shelter program at our rec centers, that the number that you see on the page, or that you saw on the presentation, includes the cost of the rec and parks staff that are staffing those centers, in addition to the contract nurses and other staff that we have, and the services at, at those centers, they do not include the cost of LAPD. LAPD is also staffing each rec center, as, as you know.
Right, so, so there is a lot of potential reimbursement that I assume that our first avenue for that is FEMA, correct? Because we, we want to, you know, the 700 million, we want to...
That, that's correct.
The FEMA, I, the FEMA money doesn't have the cap on it, so that would be the money we go to first, and if we need to use the 25% from the, the COVID fund, we do. But I would love to, and I, and I guess I already have a motion from the Budget Committee to try to understand these numbers, but I think they're really critical numbers because on our, on our bottom line as a city and on the cuts that we have to make in terms of how we account for the work that we are really doing because of this COVID crisis. And, and frankly, a lot of the work that we're not doing, you know, that, you know, staff that has, that has been, you know, disaster staff that is now working full-time on disaster relief, they're not doing their regular work. So it makes sense that their, their pay should not be coming from the regular salaries, it should be coming from ultimately through the reimbursement process, through the FEMA or through the COVID. And, and that, in a sense, is a way to, to get a lot more money back into our budget.
Correct. And that, and that has been the guidance that we have been receiving from our conversations with Treasury, that that is a way to compen, to compensate the city for having to redeploy its workforce in a substantial way, and they understand that we're, that a redeployed city employee isn't doing the work that we are paying that employee to do. And so although they have a hard line against us using those dollars to, to add to our general fund budget, that is an explicitly allowable use of those funds.
Right. Yeah, and then on, on the testing, I assume if we could get 75% back from FEMA, and if we can get the 25% back from the county, or some combination of county and state, that would obviously be the, the goal for us on that. Anyway, I appreciate the work that you're doing. This is, this is a, this is a really tough budget, and, and as, as you've mentioned, and as, as Council President and our chair has mentioned, the, the fear is that this is, it's only going to get worse from here, and that we're going to be faced with even more difficult choices. So things like this reimbursement and some of these other key questions are, are critical, not just for, for restoration, but for preventing even deeper cuts that we might have to see. So thank you for your work.
Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one quick question. Of the $700 million that we've been talking about, as of now, what, what amount do we anticipate actually being able to access? Do we think we'll, we'll utilize that entire $700 million, or will we fall substantially short of that?
Do, are you referring to how much we would access to cover costs of redeployed city employees?
Of, of every, how much, how much of that are we actually going to be able to utilize? Will it be the whole $700 million? Are we calculating it'll be more like $500 million? What's, what's a sense of what we get out of that?
Our, our intention is to utilize the entire $694 million. I, I will say that there are a number of guardrails on that, on the, the use of those dollars. One of them is that those dollars must be expended by December 30th, 2020. The, the, they can only be used for expenses incurred from March 1st, 2020, to December 30th, 2020. And again, in our numerous conversations with Treasury, they are not interested in us funding long-term programs before the deadline and then continuing to use that money after the fact. We really need to spend those dollars on COVID-specific responses within that frame, within that timeframe. And we, we very much expect and intend that, to, to spend all of those dollars, particularly because those dollars are an allowable use, is financial assistance to businesses and residents that are suffering revenue loss and job loss, income loss due to COVID, and there is a far greater need in the community than even $700 million could cover.
Certainly. Thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. This question is for you and Mr. Kokorian. I have a whole litany of questions, but I was going to wait for the next panel to ask all of them. So some of my questions are getting answered now, so where are we with asking questions? Should I just dive in on the office, or should I wait?
Yeah, you could hold on, because right after this presentation, we've got our CLA and our CAO that are waiting to, for their presentation, so I can take additional questions in as well.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, let's do that. So why don't, if, if there aren't any more questions from our members of the mayor's office, let's go ahead and bring our next panel up. Good morning, Mr. Llewellyn. Do you want to kick us off?
Sure. Thank you for having us, Council President. Good morning, Council President, good morning, members. Briefly, I'm here with the CLA. We're going to give you a, a report on where we are in this budget year, 1920, a brief discussion of COVID expenditures, as you've heard a more lengthy discussion from the mayor's office, a discussion of sort of the proposed budget that's before you, and some of the financial assumptions in that budget, mostly the financial risks in those assumptions, and then some possible sort of, sort of better news in the horizon, and then we'll be sort of talking about the past forward. And Sharon and I will be going back and forth, and I'm kicking it to Sharon next.
Good morning. So the basis of this report was actually in response to Item 2 on today's agenda. It was pursuant to a motion from Mr. Kokorian, Ms. Martinez, and Mr. Price instructing our offices to report on the city's financial health for 2019 as we end the year, as well offices to report on the city's financial health for 2019 as we end the year, as well as how the budget looks as we approach 2021, also with regard to the rate of expenses across city departments for COVID-19, and a review of the 2021 budget and the impact of furloughs on operations and programs for the most vulnerable residents and families. For COVID-19, the CIO has submitted a separate report. For the furlough plans, departments have submitted tentative furlough plans, and the CIO has also submitted a report dated May 19th addressing these. We will discuss briefly in this presentation.
If I could start with this year we are in, the no-good news. We will end the year with weakened reserves and increased liabilities. As you remember, in our mid-year FSR, we reported that we were expecting overspending, and the revenues were largely at budgeted levels. We expected to have to use the reserve fund to close the year, but we would maintain our reserve fund above the policy level of 5%. The proposed budget shows how much that has changed. We expect many of our tax revenues to be down, the proposed budget does. It takes us down for the first time since 2010 that we're going to require this large of magnitude from our reserve fund to close the year. And we would note that this is based on the proposed budget, as you have heard from the mayor's office, and you'll hear from the CLA, our own budget, our own income analysts. We expect this year to actually even close a little worse than the proposed budget. We are fortunate. Most of the COVID-19 response to date has been paid for by loans from the Building and Safety Reserve Fund and from the reserve fund, and our departments have front-funded this. These loans will, are going to create a general fund liability if we don't actually have the federal financial support to repay them. Briefly on COVID-19 expenditures, you've heard from the mayor's office. One correction in our report, our spending of ninety-one million that we've gathered for FEMA reimbursement is approximately two months of expenditures. As you have heard, FEMA does not cover all of our expenditures. They don't cover certain salary costs, and they only cover it 75%. But advice from Treasury just this week said that the coronavirus fund could cover the 25%, and we believe that fund can cover the expenses that FEMA will not cover. It's difficult to project out. As the mayor's office said, the testing budget was going up every week, but we hope at some point that the county will step up and take over that service. The project, the homeless housing project itself is growing every single week, we're leasing up new hotels, that budget will increase. And your council has been very involved in conversations with Judge Carter. We don't know what that homeless litigation, how that will end, and how much of that will be fundable, if any, through the COVID response. The next chart just summarizes our sorts of funds. As you know, again, loans that you have approved, and the available balance. Not all of that money has been spent, some of it is just encumbered, but as the mayor's office reported, that fund is largely encumbered, and there may be a need for more money. Turning to the proposed budget, it's a tough budget. It actually reduces our total budget by almost 2%, and virtually keeps positions even. On the next slide, the proposed budget summary. As you've heard from the mayor's office, we appreciate that the budget funds most of the city's major obligations. All MOUs are fully funded, it fully pays our pension and benefit costs. There's one thing that we don't think it fully funds. Anticipating what our liability expenses will be, we never know, but we believe that there's not, there may not be enough to cover that in the course of the year. It does maintain police and fire, homeless cleanup, homeless services, some of our critical services, and has some contingencies to prepare for downside risk. A small transfer to the reserve fund, some money put aside for the zoo in El Pueblo in case they continue to stay closed, because revenues are important to their operation. And the timing of public works projects has been structured in a way that if our public works funding sources, which are largely tax-based, don't come in as anticipated, those projects can be delayed. While there's good news, as the mayor's office has pointed out, there are reductions across virtually every service. Furloughs, no one likes them. They're just service reductions, and they're steep. The hiring freeze makes it hard to find other ways to accomplish that money. We're lower in expense spending, we're lower in our capital program, we're really lower across the board. Furloughs, want to talk a little bit about that, because we're all concerned about it. We're all concerned about our employees, and we're all concerned about the services furloughs represent. At your request, departments have submitted letters trying to explain how furloughs will hurt their services. We are meeting with our labor partners to discuss the impacts of furloughs, as well as alternative furloughs. I don't have anything to report at this time, except for vigorous discussions are going on. There are limited exemptions, and the furloughs are tough. They are hurting important services. We did do a report to you, as the CLA mentioned, last week, maybe this week, sorry, this week, which does summarize in one place, so you can look at it, the responses from departments to furloughs, and our review of those. The truth is, we think the furloughs hurt, but we don't have other ways easily to replace them. As the mayor representative mentioned, with the firm hiring freeze money already taken into account, and with salary savings already slashed, some of the ways departments in the past have been able to save money, putting off backfilling positions, doing that later in the year, we've already taken those savings. We don't see easy ways to come up with alternatives to those furloughs, while we recognize the real service cuts they represent. We are continuing to work with our labor partners, and hope we have better information to report, but we don't today. Turning to my colleague.
So, because nearly all departments will be subject to furloughs, those departments serving the city's most vulnerable populations will likely see service-level reductions. Services provided by the Department of Aging, Cultural Affairs, Disability, Economic Development, Housing, and Recreation and Parks will all see service-level reductions. The Aging Department, while the meals programs will be increasing as a result of COVID-19 reimbursements, some of their programming services will likely be reduced. With regard to contracts that some of these departments provide in partnership, many of the services that are provided will be maintained at current levels in the proposed budget. These include the life mine reimbursements, LA RISE, the family source centers, youth source centers, day laborer sites, domestic abuse response teams, human trafficking, enforcement, and shelter programs. Those are maintained at current level. The proposed budget does also include some reductions in the grid program, the gang reduction and youth development office, as well as the elimination of the summer night lights program, simply because it is unlikely any programming will happen during the summer. And one caveat that we would have relative to the funding of these programs is that as we proceed into the upcoming year, that many of these programs will be subject to further review and analysis. The next slide relates to the unrestricted revenue. We've heard from several departments during the budget hearing of last week that they indicated that they received a budget reduction that was in much greater proportion to what they are in the budget. I use city attorney as an example. I believe they mentioned that their budget reduction was three times what their proportion is to the budget. And this is the reason why. The unrestricted revenues in the city are those general funds that we receive from property tax, all taxes, business tax, power revenue transfer, parking fines, and these are the sources of revenues that are used for all municipal services. Because the budget has a large portion of these unrestricted revenues that go towards police and fire, choosing to protect these services in the budget actually requires deeper cuts into these departments, the remaining 30% of the city departments, which are funded by the unrestricted revenues. So, to the extent that if reductions were spread more equitably, it could actually reduce the impact on the remaining 30% departments.
The next slide is a summary of our compliance with our fiscal policies. We put this in because we're very proud, honestly, to work for you. As some of your members have already discussed, while you care deeply about service to your residents, you realize that part of your job and part of the way you ensure services is by being fiscal stewards and being budgetarily responsible. We're not, our report cards are not that good this year. We are particularly into reserves and capital spending. We are not where we'd like to be. We need to get back up. But we sort of commend this slide to you, because you have been the ones who have been sort of holding us, honestly, the CLA, the CIO, and the rest of the city departments, to actual kind of fiscal responsibility, in addition to your goal to sort of drive service delivery. Just want to sort of briefly say the sort of financial assumptions behind the budget, and particularly COVID. We are expecting that, as it has been lifting, the safer-at-home order will be lifted starting in May, which is true, but the speed and sort of amount of lifting is part of the certainly question. The budget isn't expecting a second or third closure. We believe that federal funding will cover most COVID-related expenses, and we're hoping all. To date, federal funding to cover revenue loss has not been allowed. I remind all of your council, as your legislative priority, certainly that's got to be one of our highest. The budget assumes the economic activity does start, and that we're starting to rebound, that the economy will be slow in the next fiscal year and rebound the year after. Those assumptions are not expected by everyone. We also just want to point out on the next slide, the sort of property tax is largely in the proposed budget assumed to continue. To date, the COVID sort of financial crisis has not been property-based. We need that to continue. If that changes, our single biggest revenue source that's increasing in a traditional path will be significantly impacted. And these are the budget numbers, as you will hear from our CLA. These were created just a few weeks ago, and the economy's already changed in just a few weeks. The next slide is our sort of annual, kind of the growth of our economically sensitive taxes, our general fund taxes. As you can see, this year is a very small number. We're expecting growth, but small. If property tax were to turn on us, that would be a very difficult and worse picture. And then I'll turn it over to my colleague to give you all the doom and gloom news.
So, in general, as Rich indicated, the revenue estimates are predicated on a return to normalcy in July. Obviously, this will be impacted by many factors. Consumer confidence will be a factor, unemployment rate, will the economy restart, will tourism come back? These are all unknown. We really just have no certainty in terms of how our revenues are going to be impacted at this time. We just don't have enough information. And in fact, some of these will be outside of the city's control. The next few slides, we will talk about some of the downside risks included in the proposed budget. The first one relates to COVID-19. As indicated, the budget does not anticipate another safer-at-home order will be required passed this month, and also that it does not anticipate any further shutdown, which may occur if there is additional spikes. Federal and state funding, we do know that it will cover some of the costs. Many of the costs have been off-budget, and to the extent that we will be able to recover some of the existing salary costs, we will make every effort to do so. But we do know that in the past, the city has not always received all of its requests for reimbursements. The economic conditions, there is no consensus at this time about the severity or the length of this recession, and the assumption that we will recover quickly is not assured, and it really will depend upon whether people return to normalcy, and it remains to be seen. I know there are a lot of people that are very concerned, and even with restaurants opening in some cities, that there is extreme reluctance to go into these places, and tourism, which is a large part of our economy, really will be a question of whether people will be comfortable beginning to visit and come to Los Angeles again. We hope so. On the revenue side, if our economic performance is worse than we anticipate, of less than the 3% that's included, we could end up in a position of having much less revenue than we anticipate already in the proposed budget. The extended closure could impact transient occupancy tax, which is already down eighty-two million dollars. The parking occupancy tax will also be affected, and as Rich alluded to, if this recession spills into the housing market, our documentary transfer tax will also see a reduction. Sales tax and business tax are also, be very susceptible to further reductions. And I want to highlight three things with regard to some of our economically sensitive revenues. On the parking occupancy tax, we don't know whether there are going to be any refund requests that will be made for any prepaid parking that may have occurred for any sporting and entertainment events. That is not contemplated in the budget, nor is sales tax. The governor announced two programs which may impact our receipts on sales tax, and those relate to a three-month deferral of the sales tax receipts, as well as a $50,000 payment plan for businesses. So, depending upon the participation level, we understand that that could impact our sales tax receipts by up to $95 million for next year. And finally, as it relates to business tax, there is, while there is an increase anticipated, it's really because of deferred tax receipts coming from the current year as a result of the closure. But really, we don't know whether business tax will come in at that level, because honestly, we don't know whether businesses will be able to pay. We don't know how many will be able to pay, and the gross receipts that they make will obviously be much lower in 2020. So, all of those will come to bear on our receipts for 2021. And just to put it into perspective, during the Great Recession, we saw overall our economically sensitive revenues decrease by 4.8%. As a matter of perspective, that could mean a $242 million decrease in our revenue receipts for next year. And finally, another part of our budget relates to departmental receipts. If there is a more slower return of the economy, that could also impact our receipts. This next slide is actually an update from our presentation of last week. It is to provide an update from the Controller and the Office of Finance that the Chair alluded to earlier today. Relative to 2019-20 revenue estimates, the Office of Finance just recently reported that our general fund taxes to date are already $30 million below than what was anticipated in the proposed budget. And then the Controller recently released a report indicating that the final property tax payments that we received in the current year will be delayed until July. So, if both of these happen, it means simply that our year-end for this year will be much lower and much worse than we thought. The anticipated reserve fund that we saw of the roughly 3.46% could actually decrease by an additional 2%, meaning that we could be in a situation where we would only have an emergent... an emergency reserve, that there would be no contingency reserve. So that is a real concern that we have. Also, on 2021 revenue risk, the Office of Finance, during the Budget Finance Committee report last week, we heard from them that they are already anticipating that the 2021 revenue estimates will be $45 million short at a minimum, and that it could rise up to $400 million, depending upon how quickly the economy recovers. The greatest downside risks, again, are in the case of business tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax, and parking tax. And finally, one additional note, when the mayor's proposed budget was released, the county assessor had not released their assessed valuation report. That came out last week as well, and they indicate that they believe that the assessed valuation will increase by 5.14%. Our proposed budget anticipates a 6.6%. And while the city of Los Angeles is always ahead of LA County in terms of assessed valuation, this still may have a $10 to $20 million impact on our revenue estimates next year. So keeping in mind that if revenues come in lower, that we will likely have to make further reductions or identify other revenue for the upcoming year. And then with regard to special funds, as you know, special funds in the city budget support a lot of salaries and expenses in city departments. This may include the local public safety tax, which funds, public safety fund that supports police and fire services, the gas tax, which supports street services, and transportation, and special parking fund, which also supports transportation. Recreation and parks is dependent upon revenue estimates that come in from their programming. There are a whole host of other ones, like Measure R and Measure M. To the extent that any of these are short as a result of the economic conditions, the general fund may end up being the backstop for any shortfalls here because of the salaries and expenses that are funded by those departments. And what's concerning here is that if we are the backstop, that our general fund reserves are going to be very, very limited next year. And if we can flip to the next slide, you'll see, as a matter of comparison, and both the mayor's office, the Chair, and Mr. Llewellyn have already touched upon this, but our reserve fund is going to be at the lowest point since 2010, '11. And actually, as indicated earlier, it actually might be lower than that, and it is very likely. The cumulative reserves that we have will be only at 5.8%, which will be the lowest level since 2012 and '13. So our ability to address some of the upcoming and looming concerns, it will be very limited. There will be limited resources to address any of these contingencies. There is some upside, as was indicated earlier by all of my colleagues here. There is federal funding that will be available, and is available, the approximately $700 million in CARES Act funding, but as indicated, it is strictly to reimburse for expenditures. It is not used for revenue replacement, and we will be doing an analysis to determine how those funds will be used. CAO will be reporting back. The other aspect of potential upside is that there is discussions in Congress regarding a fifth coronavirus aid package. If that comes through, that will obviously be a great assistance to our general fund, is hope that that will provide revenue replacement. The House did pass a HEROES Act last week, that would be HR 6800, and it would provide both state and local relief funds, and we're hopeful of its passage. But we understand that there may be further negotiations on that package, and it may be unlikely to pass, given both the Senate and administration have objections to it. So where does that take us? This city charter requires the city council to act on the proposed budget no later than June 1st. The council actually has a very limited timeframe in which to approve and review the budget, approximately six weeks. And this year, even though we had very little time in which to devote to it, we do know that regardless of how much time we had, it was going to be difficult to make any real revenue changes or expenditure changes, given the fact that there is so much uncertainty regarding this budget. So whether the council approves this budget or whether they send it back, we do know for certain that we will be reviewing it and revisiting it often throughout the year. And we understand that, you know, it's going to be a very difficult year, that we will be reviewing all of the budget motions that come through to the Budget Finance Committee. We understand that restoring services are of utmost concern to the city council, but given the uncertainty that we have in the revenues as presented, the expenditures that are still evolving, the unknown amount of when and how much and reimbursements we will receive, we need to be really, really careful as we approach next year. We need to be really judicious of how we use our reserve funds because of the limited nature. And then there's also what is coming up next year, the following year. We don't know how long this is going to last. We do know that there are going to be other impacts. We do know that there is a structural deficit that we're going to have to deal with. So we've alluded to this about reviewing, looking at this budget as a placeholder that we will continue to look, that we remind the council that you will retain discretion on this budget process, that as, in normal years, during the financial status reports, the council and the mayor, we constantly review and adjust depending upon the information that we have. And we see that this will be happening probably much more often in the upcoming year. The Chair has also indicated that we will be convening the Budget and Finance Committee throughout the month of June, that any modifications that will be brought forward, will be brought forward to the council. And this will actually just provide more time to consider all of the uncertainty that we have, and actually be able to provide more of a public process to allow the public to, to address the committee and the council about the budget reductions, to allow just further discussions with our labor partners as well, and also to hear about the impact from departments. Largely, the rate of our recovery, the reimbursements, and the possibility of the federal relief, those are ultimately what will determine our city actions. And honestly, it is very, very likely that the budget that we have before us may be a best-case scenario, and it is very, very likely that additional reductions will be required to get through the next year. So with that, we are available to answer any questions the council may have. It is not a good budget situation. In summary, we do know that we were going to end this year worse than we thought. It is very likely that we will begin the year worse than we thought, and that we will have to be continuing to work on this budget throughout the upcoming year.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Maybe this is for the mayor's office, but does the mayor's proposed budget assume that the counters are open at the beginning of each fiscal year? What happens if we're closed longer than that? Have we thought about that?
You should all come to the table, just make sure you're far apart from each other.
The proposed budget assumes that we would be able to resume collecting business tax starting in July. If we're unable to do so, it would result in delayed receipts. Currently, I think Office of Finance is looking into ways to start collecting business taxes that they have been unable to collect as a result of, as a result of City Hall shutting down this fiscal year. But I hope that answers your question.
And Councilmember, the proposed budget does expect that we will be back issuing, we're doing lots of permit issuing and stuff online in different ways. We've been trying to be creative on that, but those kinds of businesses, including tax collection, will be back sort of close, moving towards full operational starting in July.
Yeah, and I know we're also working with our county partners in terms of how do we do that safely for people, in case we're ready to reopen, especially City Hall? So we need to make sure that we think through that stuff. That's why I was asking, because our office is working hand-in-hand with the LA County Public Health Department to ensure that when we do reopen, that we're doing it responsibly and we're taking all the necessary measures to be able to do that. Just wanted to make sure we took that into account. My next question was, I know we've heard from our city controller on property taxes and how we might have a shortfall of $90 million. When will we have clarity on that? Or are those just delayed for now, or is it a permanent lost?
Councilmember, that is a timing, not permanent. So we expect that it will happen, and it will kick into July, which is why this year will be even lower. But we do expect those. Unlike many of our business taxes, which are permanent, the property tax is a timing issue.
And then my last question before I start handing it over to the members. So I know we've, there's been conversations about the impact that furloughs are going to have on city services. I know there's been discussion about that in our budget committee. In each FSR, we should be considering how furloughs are impacting our recovery, especially if we're unable to undo those furloughs right away.
Yes, Councilmember.
Mr. O'Farrell, why don't we start with you?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me start with thanking the mayor's office, our CAO's office, and CLA's office, and our Budget Chair, Mr. Kocorian, on not sugarcoating anything. On this council, since this pandemic began, we've talked a lot about just leveling with folks and not giving anyone false hope about anything that we can or cannot do, or anything that's beyond our control. I think it's really important to stick with that message while at the same time, fighting like the dickens to make sure that we receive all of our reimbursements, that we hold our own feet to the fire, and those of officials at the county, state, and federal level. So I just wanted to start with that and thanking the departments, the mayor's office, for their incredibly difficult work on this devastating budget. And I think Sharon said it best when she said the budget proposal is predicated on a return to normal in July. Now, we all know that that's not going to happen. So I think that is a signal that we need to prepare for even more austerity measures. And I think that just starting off in the right psychological space is the best place to begin. And so even though that's really difficult and terrible, I think it puts us on a road to actually taking a look at real solutions moving forward. So we all hope that this is a V-shaped recovery. Maybe it's going to be more like a U-shaped recovery, because the underpinnings of the economy before COVID-19 struck were pretty strong across the board. So I'm hopeful that that foundation of economic strength will really hold us steady as we start easing into the new normal once the pandemic begins to ease. Just a few brief questions, and I appreciate the questions that were asked before CAO and CLA's office began in terms of the reimbursement pieces with, as it relates to fire and first responders and others. The first question that I have is, we know that the, there will be impacts to services. We know that furloughs are on the way, and we're going to try to do what we can to even mitigate the impacts of the furloughs. However, with the less, the lessening of basic city services, what sorts of liability, can you address any liability issues we have in relation to that? In terms of emergency needs based on, you know, street trees or issues in the public rights of way that provide, you know, some sense of liability to the general public? Can you address that for starters?
I'll start with it, and then if the CAO or CLA would like to jump in. We've been working and we have instructed our departments to, to develop furlough plans that protect the basics. And as it relates to street trees, as it relates to street services, as it relates to engineering, it is a foundational principle that taking care of the areas that are potential liabilities is their first priority. So we would expect, and as we move forward, if we do have to move forward with furloughs, that we will be reviewing all of those plans and working with the departments to make sure that those needs are taken care of.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember, just in the, in the vein of non-sugarcoating, you know, the less we do in capital, the less we do on streets, the less we do of this kind of work does expose us to potential holes in the street, holes in the thing, the pipes bursting. It's real, but I believe the mayor's office is doing what they can to minimize this sort of impact in the short term.
And the reason I go there is we also are limiting our liability funding payouts. So this council over the last seven years has, and I don't need to, you know, belabor this one, because our Budget Chair has been sort of at the forefront on underscoring the necessity of the city doing all it can to protect ourselves from these lawsuits. When fairly inexpensive mitigation measures could go into place to prevent some of these injuries in the public rights of way, I just think it's going to be really important to focus on moving forward and not give short shrift to simple repairs and simple preventative measures that we can take, and be thinking about that right now, especially as it relates to Bureau Street Services, Department of Transportation, et cetera. So I appreciate that. Another one, and Mr. Zabo, you talked about this, in terms of the funding for reimbursements as it relates to homelessness services. In terms of that budget, can you talk about which funding comes from CARE Act funding? Which of our budget proposal comes from emergency funding related to COVID-19?
So there's a, there's a number of sources. There are two sources, two, there's a federal source and a state source that we have already been allocated. One is in the Emergency Solutions Grant. We received about $16 million of that, which we are working with LASSA right now to determine how we're going to spend those additional dollars. We anticipate, I will just say, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but we anticipate that whatever outcome we are either required to comply with, or that we agree to comply with in the Judge Carter hearings, will require significant additional resources for staffing shelter alternatives, and so we would be looking to use that, those dollars for that. The $19 million that we received from the state in supplemental COVID-related HAP funding, those dollars are 100% dedicated to the city's requirement for Project Room Key, in which we believe we will have approximately 2,000 rooms when it is completely up and running within the city. The other source of funding is, would be the subject of a conversation that we would have with the council moving forward. The COVID Relief Fund, that's again, that $694 million fund in the CARES Act, does cite homelessness as an explicit eligible source or eligible expenditure, as long as it is within the context of protecting the unsheltered from the COVID, from the virus. And given that the, the number-one recommendation from health orders and health officials is for folks to stay home, providing shelter, and particularly individual shelter for the unsheltered, is, is a consistent and overlapping objective of both our COVID response and our homelessness response in general. And through several conversations with Treasury- And through several conversations with Treasury, they have confirmed that we are allowed to use it for those purposes as long as the expenditures are complete by December 30th. Those are the three main areas of state and federal funding we're relying on.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad to hear that. I think, and I'm really glad to hear you say that the primary objective is putting a roof over a person's head, getting people indoors. We've just run in so many circles over the years on homelessness, and everything keeps pointing to, let's get people inside and get them services indoors. And, you know, the whole spectrum of what indoors means. So I really appreciate that, and that's a little bit of a silver lining considering we'll have 600 million plus through the CARES Act for homelessness relief. It also underscores the really strong desire that we need to accept nothing less, under any circumstance, of the city's fair share from the county. How dare the county expect us to subsidize some of their needs when the city of Los Angeles has the lion's share of needs as it relates to homelessness in the county? So I just want to take this opportunity again to just say that we need to keep fighting for the resources that I feel that the county is not fully providing us. That's a really important point to make. And then just something else I want to say, and this is probably to the Budget Committee when you hear reports, one of them, one of the reports would be from Bureau Street Services and another from sanitation. In terms of the sanitizing stations that this council approved through BSS, 300 of them at frequently used bus stops, and then through sanitation, 300 mobile handwashing stations and 170 portable toilets in areas where there are homeless encampments. So to the general public who is claiming that we're not doing anything to address services and needs and sanitation, especially in hygiene during COVID-19, just let it be known that we indeed are and that all of these stations are being dealt with and replenished on a daily basis. So perhaps to the committee, when you hear from sanitation and Bureau Street Services, we could get further reports on how that will continue. And then lastly, even though the House of Representatives approved HR 16800, the HEROES Act, I think there is a public demand across the country, red states, blue states, purple states, because the pandemic is striking everyone equally, whether or not some leaders in some states don't want to recognize that. So I think that there is a clarion call across the country for the Senate to take action as well. I'm realistic but optimistic as well that the bill that the House of Representatives approved will definitely be negotiated and changed, but I think the pressure for Congress and the executive branch to act will be there. So I'm a little more optimistic than Ms. So, but I understand why there's caution at that because at the end of the day, they could kill it. I think it's unlikely. Where I'm going with this is, let's keep fighting to make sure that relief to the cities, to governments, to mortgage holders and renters stays intact in that bill. And that's going to take a unifying effort across all jurisdictions, across the state and country. So let's all collectively keep pushing in that way. And with that, I thank you, and if I have more questions, I'll push my button again.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you also for your comments when you opened this up about the statement of values and what we need to be looking out for in this budget. And thank you, as always, Mr. Kocorian, for your laying out a very sober and responsible framework for how we need to go about this. This is a painful time, and this is a painful budget, and we're going to have painful choices with painful results. And what comes out of our Budget and Finance Committee may look very different than this, but it's also going to have inevitable painful results because we have a greater need and we either have less or an uncertain amount of money in which to meet those needs. And in addition to providing basic services, we need to do what Ms. Martinez, Council President Martinez outlined, and make sure we are taking care of those in Los Angeles who are vulnerable and hurting in an unprecedented way and to an unprecedented extent. And as we do this, you know, Mr. Kocorian lived through this 10 years ago. I was a staff member to Mr. Rosendahl, who was on the Budget Committee. There's a real sense of déjà vu of where we are, a sudden economic collapse. And frankly, many of the prescriptions we're using so far to deal with it are very, very similar, of using furloughs, of cutting basic services, hitting civilian and not hitting swarm. And that had long-lasting repercussions, some of which we were just beginning to recover from. So, you know, one of the things I want to ask as we go forward is, you know, is what we are going to do today and as we work through this budget over the next few months, does it reflect our priority, does it reflect our priorities and our values and does it meet the most urgent needs of the moment? And, you know, the revenues here that we're talking about are fictitious, but the framework of what we're talking about, I think we need to look at. You know, how many hours over the past couple of months have we talked about protecting renters, providing affordable housing, solving homelessness? In the CAO report from two days ago, H-SID says that the civilian furloughs will reduce its ability to provide services to tenants under RSO, it will prevent poverty and homelessness programs through the Family Source Center Program, it would impede its work on domestic violence shelters and unaffordable housing. You know, how many hours have we talked about helping small businesses and families that are suffering from job loss? EWD says it will result in delays in services to thousands of workers and businesses seeking service, including small business emergency microloans, rapid response to dislocated workers, higher LAU. How often have we spoken about seniors? And the work that everybody here is trying to do to seniors. Aging says that the civilian furloughs will create operational challenges, delays in service, and impacts to the Senior Delivery Meals Program. Emergency management, our emergency management folks say the civilian furloughs will reduce the department's available staff to ensure the readiness of the city's emergency operations center and will delay mass notification response times through Notify LA and the wireless emergency. ITA says the civilian furloughs will increase cybersecurity risks. Now, there is going to be, inevitably, there's going to be pain, and we're doing so at a time when the budget for LAPD is increasing. And many will say that some of these cuts, some of this pain through the civilian furloughs are the price of public safety. And frankly, there are many I represent who might argue that. But I want to note that the civilian furlough approach does not even mean more public safety in the CAO report from the other day. Not only did they note the EMD hits and they also noted the BE fleet reductions and equipment reductions for LAFD, elimination of grid, which is investment in public safety, but it says for the police department, the civilian furloughs, the impact on the police department with civilian furloughs will mean it will need 120 full-time officers at minimum, at minimum, to fill critical civilian positions as a result of both furloughs and the hiring of workers. I quote, "If all 120 officers were to be reassigned from patrol," and they said that's a minimum, "there would be a corresponding reduction of," wait for it, "220,000 hours to patrol deployment." So we are in this framework of civilian furloughs, spending more on public safety for less public safety. You can't say it's a public safety approach because losing at least 220,000 public safety hours, patrol hours, will hurt response times, hurt investigations, and hurt neighborhood policing. And here's the road. As Sharon noted and as Mr. Kocorian noted, this is our best-case scenario. Our next best-case scenario, the realistic best-case scenario, is we have to cut another $50 million. And some of our scenarios that we have to look at is we may have to cut 300 or 400 million. Now, I don't think there is any way to do that and make deeper cuts into all these civilian departments and make deeper cuts into patrol hours without touching 52% of the budget. So my suggestion and my question to those at the table is, I know we are talking to our labor partners. I don't see any way through this without causing more pain and frankly, you know, anarchy, without revisiting existing contracts and talking about deferring raises. There really is no way through it. And it is going to be an inevitable conversation, so I'm wondering why we're not having it now. So I guess that's my question to Rich or the Mayor's Office. Are we having those conversations, not just sitting down and talking about, actually having the conversations, that if we don't have them now and we start having them in six months, all we can do is make deeper cuts that impact everything, including public safety?
Councilmember, I don't want to discuss labor sort of confidential discussions in the public setting, but we have put everything on the table. Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's, you know, laying it out there, I think that's the only way we're going to get through this. Because we can't keep paying everybody more and providing less across the board, both in terms of public safety that this budget says it protects and in terms of all the basic services we're used to and all of the services we need to provide to meet the incredible need of the moment. So I look forward to further unhappy discussions in Budget and Safety Committee. Thank you.
Mr. Ru?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few questions and a comment. The Reserve Fund, and I think on page four of your report, CLA, CAO report, talks about $188 million transfer. And of course, in the various budget documents that we saw, we went from 2019 to 2020 to 2021, we are going for our reserves, total reserves, $559 million to basically $387 million. I know you talked about it, and I know from the Mayor's presentation, when it comes to COVID costs, it was borrowed from the various funds. But this shortfall in the city's reserves, how much of that is related to COVID-19?
Councilmember, the Reserve Fund has loaned $30 million to the COVID-19 response, but the, if you call the revenue loss COVID-19, all of it is COVID-19 on the revenue loss side.
So basically, the reduction of our reserves is roughly about $30 million that was loaned out for COVID response and about, I guess, another 150 million based on loss and revenue?
So far, sir.
Okay. And obviously, and from your presentation, you hope the $30 million will be partially, if not fully, recouped by the federal and state governments, right?
Yes, sir.
At least the $30 million portion. And then obviously, I think this question is more for the Mayor's Office. I know this isn't an emergency like we've ever experienced in the past, and it's new for us, but it's no less an emergency. I wanted to ask, are there, or actually, CLA, CAO could answer this as well, are there any restrictions on the use of the city's emergency reserves or contingency reserves to reduce the need for furloughs? And if not, could you elaborate on the decision to not use those reserves before considering furloughs?
So with regard to whether there are any requirements, the, if you take money from the Reserve Fund, you need to make a finding that there is a need to take the funding. There is also a requirement that you have provisions to repay or replace some of the Reserve Fund monies. Now, as we indicated earlier, it is very likely that at the beginning of July 1, that the Reserve Fund isn't even going to have enough to place in the emergency fund component, that it will be less than the 2.75% that would normally be placed there. So using that is probably not going to be, it may not be an option. And we would also remind you that, as we indicated earlier, that the use of these reserve funds, whether it be the emergency reserve or the contingency reserve or any of the other reserves, they're one-time uses. Once you've used them, they're done. And if you're using it for ongoing costs, that really puts us in a very tenuous position as it relates to any other contingencies that might occur during the year. So we would have real concern about using the reserve funds, which are one-time use, for continuing costs. And as we've indicated earlier, this may be the best situation that we're in. We don't know how long this is going to last. It may get us through a few months, and then you will be left with little or few options.
Councilmember, I would add, not to add to the doom and gloom, but part of the point of the Reserve Fund certainly is to deal with fiscal concerns, but it's also there for that earthquake, for that fire. We just can't afford to empty our reserves and not have the backstop for those, honestly, catastrophic events that sadly we are due for here in Los Angeles.
I understand that. And so when it comes to the Reserve Fund, whether it's emergency or contingency, is there a limit on how much we could borrow or the number of times in a single fiscal year that we could withdraw from these funds?
There isn't a limit, but you're limited by the amount of money that you have. So, and over the last few years, we have maintained a rather healthy reserve. In the blink of an eye, we've lost over $200 million in the Reserve Fund. And there isn't any way to replenish it at this point.
All right. And last question is, the Budget Stabilization Fund has a balance of $114.2 million, and the policy set by council in January allows us to withdraw up to $38 million from the fund for the coming fiscal year. Are there any limitations on that, on the use of these funds?
Again, sir, it's like the other reserve funds. If you made findings, you can use it. Again, not to repeat Sharon, but I always repeat Sharon because she's smarter than I. They are one-time, and we are facing a difficult economic year next year, at least next year, if not on an ongoing basis, and we still have to worry about that earthquake. I would encourage caution, tremendous caution in depleting our reserves further. We need to rebuild them back up.
And I'll just add, Councilmember, there was significant discussion in the Mayor's Office about whether to tap into the Budget Stabilization Fund. And for all of the reasons that our CAO and CLA have laid out, as it relates to the potential downside to what we've proposed, as it relates to revenue, we chose not to recommend tapping into the Budget Stabilization Fund at all, given the likelihood that we may need to do it in the future.
Councilmember, I'd like to just sort of, one more comment. We are very appreciative of the federal government's, you know, funding to help our COVID relief. While it's a lot of money, it is nowhere near the reflection of the hurt to our own city budget and the hurt to the broader community.
Here, here.
And so it sounds like a lot of money. It wouldn't even make us whole, much less the small businesses, the renters, the owners, the mortgage relief, all the things you want to do, which I encourage you to negotiate in Washington and get us more, but it's not like there's a golden sort of pot of money there that will solve all our problems.
And just bear in mind, the Budget Stabilization Fund, per the policy, we can take out approximately $38 million. And bearing in mind that that $38 million, if it were to be used for lifting furloughs, that would lift furloughs for three months. It doesn't get us very far.
Right, understood. But, you know, maybe that three months is what we need to get us to a transition. But this is where I'm going with this, and, you know, I just want to maybe explain where I'm starting, where my thought is at. And I know this is just the beginning of the conversation, and I really thank the Budget and Finance Committee in advance for all of the hard, tremendous heavy lifting and hard decisions that are going to be made, because we are in such a dire circumstance. And once the Budget and Finance Committee works with the rest of the council, when it comes back to council, we're going to have decisions before us that will not be easy. And I'm very clear, I'm very understanding of that. But like I said before, yes, it should be the goal of every level of government, which is why we've been advocating strongly as a full council to both the state and the federal government on providing relief and bailout for local governments. Because this pandemic, we want to make sure Because this pandemic, we want to make sure it does not make homelessness and inequality even worse. And to that end, I am very grateful to see the flurry of motions from all the colleagues that seek solutions in curtailing many of these furloughs, because furloughs put families at risk of falling behind and possibly losing their homes. And I understand that there are concerns about pulling from the various emergency reserve funds, but we are in the greatest economic crisis since the Great Depression. If this isn't an emergency, I don't know what is. And I know we often hear that, and we often say that a budget is a reflection of our values, but this pandemic and this economic crisis is a test to those values. And as you know, Councilmember Bonin stated, if we truly value working people and we want to support the most vulnerable, now is the time to keep these programs, to keep these programs going. So whether we borrow or whether we draw down from our reserves, critical services, housing and homeless services, domestic violence and family services, senior and disability services, should be and must be the last things we cut, because these are needed now and they're needed more than ever. So I just want to be clear, that if we make cuts to departments and services that serve low-income and working families, we will be paying for those cuts for decades to come. And as council president, Nury Martinez, you know, main goal and our whole city council goal is for families first, I believe we have to stick to those values, because I personally, myself, my family was one of those families. And I grew up off the 101 freeway, you know, working-class immigrant household, you know, my family had to turn to social service programs to stay afloat. And if we didn't have those service programs, and this was not even during any kind of crisis time, but they were hard times, I don't know where we would be. So right now, folks all across our city are facing unemployment, they're falling further into debt, and they're facing pressures from their landlords. And Angelenos need our housing department to be fully funded, Angelenos need our Department of Aging, and Angelenos need our workforce development. And I don't believe that we need to go bankrupt to save these critical services, but frankly, I would take the risk in order to try to keep Angelenos afloat, rather than save some money for a rainy day when it's pouring now. So we will pay dearly for these social service cuts with increasing homelessness and poverty, as we've seen from the last recession. And we are fortunate for this city council and the previous city councils to have had the foresight to have these reserves. And we should, but we should not be afraid to dip into savings during these hard times when so many Angelenos are forced to burn through all their savings just to put food on the table. So thank you, colleagues, and I look forward to continue the discussion. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to piggyback on my colleagues and join the chorus of knowing that these are tough decisions that we're making here. And I want to thank Madam President in framing this discussion and our budget, and of course, our budget chair, Paul Goukourian. We're blessed to have your leadership as chairman of our budget, leading us, of course, in the last 10 years or so. I've learned in the course of the last nine weeks as president of National League of Cities, that, you know, I'm reminded that municipalities, local leaders on the front lines of this pandemic, and we're doing all we can to ensure that our budgets remain alive. And we're in a situation where revenues were slashed at the very time emergency expenses have grown. Our budgets are hanging by a thread. We know just last week that the National League of Cities released a new research that found cities are anticipating a $360 billion revenue shortfall over the next three years. And I mentioned the leadership of our chairman in this body and the fact that we do have reserves and the budgetary decisions that we've made. We're also blessed that what we're proposing through the mayor's office and the council is that we're not proposing any layoffs. And I'll paint a picture for you, colleagues. The city of Cincinnati has furloughed 1,700 municipal employees. The city of San Antonio has furloughed 270 employees. The city of Detroit, 1,300 of their employees have their hours cut by 20%, with 900 employees being furloughed. So in light of this crisis, let us be grateful for the fact that we're not telling people to stay home and we're not furloughing and laying people off in our city government. With that, I do want to recognize, and maybe those at the table can address this, we have, feel that we should afford general managers the maximum flexibility in making these tough decisions about how to reduce expenditures for their respective departments. We've seen, even before this pandemic and this crisis, we've seen general managers have been very innovative in finding efficiencies in their departments. And there are experienced general managers that have led our departments and have reduced expenses while minimizing impact to service delivery. It's important that we create an environment where innovation is rewarded. Departments have demonstrated an ability to provide a high level of service to the city's residents while reducing expenditures. We have found through our Innovation Fund, potentially we can even look at expanding our Innovation Fund, to provide more flexibility and prioritize additional resources when they become available. We know that departments that successfully bring in more revenue should likewise be recognized and rewarded. We've seen that with, for example, Chief Tarazas in the Fire Department, been really outside-the-box thinking, him and others through the city. Going to be able to provide them with more flexibility and use existing resources and prioritize them for additional resources when they do become available. Just want to get your take, maybe Rich, Sharon, or Matt, on that piece.
Councilmember, as a general manager of my own little shop, I appreciate your concern and support for general managers sort of doing their job. Unfortunately, using my shop, we're mostly personnel. Most of our city is mostly personnel. We have already slashed their ability to hire behind. So the ways we often have saved money in the past have been like, you hire somebody later. So you save two months of that person's vacant position to use somewhere else. We've already taken that from many of our departments. Because we are so short on revenue, I would encourage any department that has a revenue idea to give me the money, because I need it, to avoid those layoffs you're worried about. It's not going to, and to avoid the service cuts you are worried about, which we are fearing already. Some of our departments have suggested they may be able to make more revenue. Many of those departments are also facing soft revenue sources, like our public works departments are facing soft revenue sources that are based on taxes largely. So while I encourage the mayor and the council to demand of GMs that they be creative, I'm not certain there's another way this year to find as much money, even with very good, innovative, creative general managers.
If I could, go ahead, Sharon, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to comment, we're going to need our general managers more than ever at this point. They are really going to need to be the ones that will get us through this with the support of their staff. So we will be relying on them to make those decisions where we can preserve services as much as possible, to the extent that revenue generating positions that open up, we're going to be relying on those general managers to move maybe a general-funded position to take over that assignment. So yes, we are receiving a lot of comments that, you know, the reductions, the furloughs, the hiring freeze is going to impact them. We would really encourage our general managers, we're going to be relying on them to move them to the right place so that our revenues don't take a greater hit, to the extent that vulnerable populations are going to be seeing service-level reductions. We would hope that they would move people to actually help address those areas. So yes, we believe in giving general managers as much flexibility as possible. We're going to be relying on them to do that.
Appreciate that. And just to Rich's, Mr. Llewellyn's point, on again, demanding the federal government throw a lifeline to cities, this is not a bailout, it's strengthening that continued partnership between local municipalities and the federal government. I was on the phone earlier this week with Speaker Pelosi, we had a lengthy discussion on our HEROES bill. The HEROES bill, if approved, can generate $500 billion to direct federal finance support to local governments over the next two years. What's our stance, and I know we've entered, we agreed on a resolution to support the bill, what are lobbyists on the ground in Washington, DC telling us on the update on these federal dollars for our cities?
So, councilman, our lobbyists in DC are not reporting particularly good news on the prospects of the HEROES Act as written. There does not seem to be any plans for it to be taken up anytime soon. And the assessment on the ground is that if it were to be taken up, it would look substantially different. So as it relates to counting on federal, additional federal funding in time for the beginning of our fiscal year, it does not, it does not look good. The mayor himself is, has strongly supported the HEROES Act and is doing everything that he can to advocate for it, but doesn't look like it's going to be going anywhere in its current form in the near future.
And that's something I heard from Speaker Pelosi, that we need to all collectively, individually, local leaders up and down the state throughout this country, reaching out to our congressional members, and to share stories on how, you know, the COVID-19 and the pandemic is really impacting our budgets. So we're also, for those listening, encouraging all our business communities and residents to do the same. We have to support for us to amplify our message. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Korex?
Thank you, Madam President. And I won't repeat a lot of the concerns of my colleagues, although I would echo all of them. We're clearly facing some very difficult times. But I've got a few questions. One is, as we exempt people from the hiring freeze, how is that going to be done and who is going to be making the decisions? Is it the mayor? Is it the mayor and council? What's going to be the process for that now and in the coming year?
Well, councilmember, currently, we have a process where departments submit their requests for hiring freeze exemption to the CAO's office. In March, our office issued a memo with guidelines that we would exempt for this current fiscal year for 1920, those positions that are public safety-related, that are revenue-generating and are legally mandated. And we say revenue-generating, we want to ensure that that full-cost recovery is considered as part of that. So upon submission from departments to the CAO's office, they provide a recommendation to the mayor's office. And for this current fiscal year, since the hiring freeze has been implemented, we've been considering those requests on a case-by-case basis.
So then who's actually making the decision, you're saying? Is it the mayor exclusively?
Currently, yes.
So we may want to take a look at that as the city council and policymaker for the city of Los Angeles, whether we want that to continue on an indefinite basis. Also, what exactly is the process going on here today? What are our plans for either voting on the budget or sending it back? And what does that actually mean in terms of the passage of the mayor's budget?
Councilmember, I would leave that question to the council president and the Budget Finance Chair.
Mr. Goukourian, did you want me to weigh in? You want to go ahead and answer the question? Go ahead.
Madam President, I would just respond briefly, that it will be my recommendation to refer the entirety of the budget back to the Budget and Finance Committee, along with, I know that members have already introduced motions relating to the budget, those would come back to committee as well, if the council president agrees with that. And we will take up those motions throughout the month of June during our regular meetings. We'll continue to consider the budget during the month of June. And frankly, as the CLA indicated, that work is not going to stop at the end of the fiscal year. That work will continue at every one of our meetings throughout the coming fiscal year as well. Because just as we usually have our quarterly financial status report meetings where we review the budget and make changes, we'll be doing much more robust financial status report equivalents and much more robust revisions in the budget on a much more regular basis as the needs require, as we find out more information about revenues, as we find out more information about reimbursements, more about cost sharing from our sister government agencies, more information about all of the variables that we don't have answers to now. Those will require us to be nimble and to be willing to make, you know, fairly significant choices, for better or for worse, as we go forward. But everything, I am going to ask that everything today be referred back to committee in terms of the budget itself.
So just to clarify for transparency, so when it's referred back to the budget and we don't take action before June 1st, the mayor's budget is approved through our inaction?
So as I said at the outset in my initial comments, the operation, by operation of the charter, if council does not approve revisions to the budget by its charter deadline, then yes, the mayor's budget becomes effective as of July 1st. But as we've done essentially every year, I think, that I've been in the council, we also make continuing revisions to the budget that might take place right up through July 1st, that will be effective on July 1st even, to change that budget. So the fact that the budget takes effect by operation of the charter does not mean that it cannot be changed by July 1st. It can be, and it will be changed likely on July 2nd and every day thereafter throughout the fiscal year as well as we move forward. This is, there has never been a time when a city budget is unchangeable. It is always intended to be a blueprint for the year, but it is not, you know, it's not carved in stone. It is a roadmap for how we will get through the year. That roadmap is going to be dramatically changed from week to week as we move forward through this fiscal year, more than at any time in our history. So it's my expectation
I know.
that yes, that budget that's before you will take effect by operation of law, but it will be changed dramatically between now and July 1st and, you know, throughout the fiscal year as well, as the council acts on things.
And my recollection from the last time we were in this situation is, the only thing that changes between June 1st and July 1st is to make a change to the budget after it's already gone into effect or been approved in this way, is 10 votes rather than eight votes. And with a council that generally seems more unified than we were then, that probably should be that much of a difference, though most of the actual changes and modifications to the budget this year are anticipated to take place in June rather than now. So two other comments, and actually, one other question, one other comment. So our project room, key rooms that are empty, which are, I know there's still hundreds of them, are we paying for those empty rooms or do we only have to pay for them once they're filled?
Councilmember, we, that story in the paper, which was a very important story, was a statewide story. It noted that LA County was doing much better than the state and wasn't having that problem. The city's contracts we've been negotiating are, we are providing the hotels a minimum, or they wouldn't lease to us at all. or they wouldn't lease to us at all. So for example, in the Grand Hotel, where we are hoping to lease 400 rooms, we are only responsible for 200, and we already have more than 200 people there. We expect to get to the full 400, but we are trying to minimize our downside. It does take about a week to, once we sign, finally actually get a lease signed, which has been tough with these hotel operators, it takes about a week to actually get the hotel open because we have to, the provider, whoever it is at that site, has to bring their staff on board, do their staff training, and start moving people in. But we already have over our minimum in the Grand, we did within the first six days.
Great. So we're not expending a lot of money for empty rooms, is the bottom line?
No, sir.
Great. And one point I'd like to make, obviously, anything that we have to do that, like furloughs, like any kind of takebacks, anything that we have to do with our employees should be our absolutely last resort. And being the last resort, I think in terms of our avowed priority, should we actually have more revenue at some time in the year, I think it should be absolutely our first priority to restore those as well. I know we want to fluff up our reserves and do all the positive things that, that we should be doing, but if we are going to take from our employees, I think we have to be willing to restore those quickly if we're better positioned to do so.
Mr. Coretts, you will make that decision, you and the mayor, as the policymakers for the city. So that will be coming through the Budget and Finance Committee. So any action to the extent that additional revenues are available, how you direct them will be determined by your action and the mayor's concurrence. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues, and Mr. Kocorian. This is undoubtedly a difficult process for all of us to have to go through, one that we hadn't obviously anticipated to have hit us so abruptly and hit so many people worldwide in the way that it has. And so much of this conversation is focused around an immediate, an abrupt pause on economic activity. We're having to now live with the lack of revenues that are being generated as a result of that loss of economic activity. That said, we are now at a point where we are starting to see a shift in what our numbers are and how we safely resume business operations in the city, not just with respect to our own, but how we get business back online in the city of Los Angeles. Transitioning folks from, that were previously deemed nonessential back into operations is also, I think, a paramount importance for this council to help shepherd in at this time. And this is just going to be a commentary about how important it is, while we have been very diligent in identifying essential and nonessential businesses and declared by the mayor under a broader guidance from the governor and the health department, we need to really be pushing forward safe, clear, and safe operating guidelines for industries to resume business so that we can help plug these gaps. Because that is really one of our biggest areas of opportunity that we have not, I think, been as, as effective in leading right now. You know, the governor yesterday, unfortunately, with respect to even the film industry. Everybody else is, you know, going to be green-lighted except here in Los Angeles. We need to be very aggressive in pursuing how we actually get more folks back to work and making sure that we can help close those gaps safely. And so this is just a commentary on why I think it's even more important for us to, to help be, you know, getting more direction and frankly, leading in this area with respect to working with the county and being in compliance, but hoping to be an example of how to create safe business practices that will get people back to work. Because the longer this extends, the more holes we're going to have to plug in this budget. And, you know, we really need to see folks getting back to work. It will help to address a lot of the concerns that we're talking about here. It will create the tax revenues that we're, you know, that folks are relying on for, for some of the essential services that we provide. And so I just, you know, I want to make sure that we are doing everything possible collectively with, and in the mayor's office, to help create that circumstance where we are going to get more folks back to work, because we're seeing it in other areas. But like I said, you know, the county just reported the lowest transmission rate since the pandemic started here in L.A. County. And I just want to make sure that concurrently, as we're talking about some of these areas where we're being reflective and cutting back our services, that we're also looking very, you know, very aggressively at how we can help provide better, clear direction for folks to be able to safely get back to work. And I know we're generally trying to create that framework, but I think it really requires us to have equal diligence and commitment and focus to that effort so that, so that we can help shorten some of the pain that we're all living through right now with some of these difficult decisions. And so I just want to make that commentary because I think it's an area that we haven't, we haven't led sufficiently here in terms of, again, what I saw yesterday with, with respect to the governor's order, even with the film industry, who's eagerly looking to obviously resume safe business practices, there might be areas where we can, where we can try to, to shift where we have this nonessential services, get back to a business practice that will then help restore this economy.
Mr. Sadio? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Madam Chair, let me begin, this is just a commentary, begin by thanking you for your leadership. I think it was important for you, the way you began the meeting, is to let people know what we're doing. This is the Los Angeles City Council, this is the policymaking body of the most important city of the nation. We are not service providers. And yet, this council, each member has scraped their budgets, their discretionary funds, and performed heroic work at a really catastrophic moment. And so I want to commend you and thank you for letting people know what we are doing, and the incredible sensitivity that exists. Paul Kocorian, let me thank you for your leadership. I trust your discipline and your experience, your fiscal prudence. I know you will do a budget that is the best budget that's possible. I want to mention Herb Wesson because we've been through this before. And I want to thank the mayor's budget team, the CLA, the CAO, because when I met Herb in 1993, as a union leader, we faced some difficulties. And the response from the county government at that time was to offer the unions 10,000 cuts in jobs. We were facing a cut of 10,000 jobs in the county workforce. That was their response. This is a completely different response we're seeing both from the mayor, the CLA, the CAO, in a really more challenging circumstance. And two years later, we were offered 17,000 job cuts and the shutting down of the entire healthcare system and a whole range of other services. We know that, the fact of the matter is, is that when there is a economic crisis, that that is the moment where the public relies on the public sector more than ever. And so this city has done that. The response that we've taken on, for example, in the testing, that's not our job, that's not our, our, our city's not designed for that purpose, but we took that on because we have leadership. And so I want us to, to, you know, lean in as we meet these challenges that are, that are in front of us, because I have confidence in the collective leadership of this body, of the, each individual and their experiences. All of us have faced difficult times, and, and we should rely on those experiences, that wealth of experiences, so that we can move forward. It's the reason that I'm in public service on this side now, because you can make those decisions and you can bring your values to the table. I want to note and thank, he's not with us, Jimmy Gomez, for his work in the HEROES Act. I have a different political analysis of it, and I'm a little more confident that at some point, we will get to some resolution of that. And, and then I want to note that while this is a difficult budget, the real challenges will be next year. The challenge in front of us is to make sure we have a friend in the White House. The challenge in front of us is to make sure that we have new friends on the county board of supervisors who understand what the city does and what the challenges are. Let me suggest that as we go forward as a group, as a, as a leadership entity, that we move forward with integrity. It's important for us to be honest with people, that we have flexibility, that transparency is important, that there are a lot of people who just simply need to know what is being done so that they can understand what the costs are and what we must do to continue the services. Let me suggest for the mayor and for the CLA and the CAO, it's important that the union partners of ours participate in this decision-making process, that we hear them, that we encourage them to provide us with solutions. I know we talked about the general managers, and they play a critical role, and we're going to need flexibility in working with them. But also our union partners. I already know that when I was at SCIU, we had some of the top economists working for us that we utilized in terms of helping us work on the budget. We had some of the top, we had Dr. Rick Brown from UCLA help us think about how we would move forward in terms of providing health services. He worked for us during that time period. So let's make sure that we have participation from our stakeholders, from the unions and from people in the community, those who rely on our services. And finally, let me say about those workers, we can't call them heroes one day and then come to the budget and talk about furloughs. We really have to weigh in and make sure that we do all that we can, because they're at the front line. They are the essential workers, those workers who work for the city of L.A. We've seen them really be heroic. We've seen them put their lives on the line. There was an explosion this weekend, right here near where I live, in downtown. And it's just incredible how the people who work for the city of L.A. really put their lives on the line and run through these tragedies while other people are running away. So I just, that's my comment. I want to thank you. There's incredible partners we have in the community. I want to note our work with Showers of Hope, they're doing incredible work there, one of the best partners that we have right now. We should, as we form this budget, as we respond to this crisis, we should look at those who are on the front line, those are doing the most for those who have the least, and let that be the guide for us as we put our budget together. Madam Chair, thank you for your leadership and for giving us this opportunity to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Members, no other questions. As mentioned earlier by Mr. Kocorian, item number one will be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee, along with all the budget motions, to be considered by the committee in June. That was ordered without objection earlier. So why don't we go ahead and prepare to vote on item number two. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscagino?
Buscagino, aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris-Dawson?
Yes.
Coretts?
Aye.
Kocorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, item two is approved. Okay, Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. As we close out this discussion, I just wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank the mayor and his budget team, the CLA, the CAO, for their presentations today, and thank all the members for this really important and robust first discussion at a very historic moment in time for our, for our city. And I recognize that this is not news that any of us like to hear. It's not news that the public likes to hear, and it's, it's a difficult challenge to take in. But I do just want to remind everyone that 10 years ago, the city was facing a crisis as a result of the economic collapse of the, of the world's economy. And a few of us, Mr. Wesson, myself, Mr. Coretts, were here to hear serious discussions on the floor of the city council about laying off 6,000 employees. Imagine, 6,000 employees being laid off. And that was a proposal that was presented to the council as a way to get through that crisis. As you've heard me say before, former Mayor Riordan was saying that bankruptcy was inevitable. We were faced with massive challenge at that time, too, and we overcame it. It took years, it took discipline on the part of this council, but we did overcome it. And to Ms. Rodriguez's point, a big part of overcoming it was getting our economy up and rolling again as well, and getting businesses to, to start generating the revenues that we need. And that will be the solution that gets us through this crisis again. We're not alone in this. To Mr. Buscagino's point, there are cities throughout this country that are suffering badly as a result of COVID-19. And in many ways, we're better off than many right now. But we're, we're all in this together. And when folks come to us and, you know, advocate around this budget, I, I want us not to lose sight of the fact that we shouldn't spend so much of our energy arguing over crumbs that fall off the table. The truth is, if there's immorality to be addressed, it's immorality in the breakdown of the social compact in this country. It's the inequality of wealth that is destroying this country, destroying its middle class. It's the decimation of public education and a, and a manufacturing base throughout this country that allows people to have decent jobs. None of those are within the province of this city to fix. We are the victim of those things, and it's our job to try to do the best we can with the hands that were dealt. So when folks come here and, you know, say the sort of accusatory things that they sometimes do towards the member, the members of this council, I would hope that with equal vigor, they address their members of Congress, and they work to elect a president of the United States that will support local governments and will support a change in the fundamental social compact and economic bargain that used to build this country and doesn't seem to do that anymore. So with that, I just want to say that, Madam President, there's never, there's probably never been a time in the history of this city that a new council president was elected with the greater combination of extraordinary challenges as you have had to face in your time as our council president. And I just want to thank you and congratulate you for helping to lead us through in the work that you've done to help us all help our constituents through this challenging time and to help prepare us for the difficult challenges that we're going to have in the year, year and years likely to come. So I want to thank you for your leadership, as well as, of course, Akli Padilla, Alexis Wesson, and Anna Hovasapian and your staff, who've all done such a magnificent job. And I want to thank the members of the Budget Finance Committee, for most of whom have served for many, many years on this committee, through good times and through not-so-good times. Mr. Price and Marissa Alcaraz of his staff, Mr. Blumenfeld and Jeff Jacobberger of his staff, Mr. Bonin and Krista Klein of his staff, and Mr. Coretts and Dave Hirsch of his staff, and, and all the rest of your staff members. And then, of course, on my team, who, the gentleman who has led this budget through the last eight years, Matt Hale of my staff, who's done
Matt Hale!
Such a great job for, for all of the people of this city. Folks, this is going to be ugly. It's going to be difficult. We've had a great privilege of serving on this committee, and we now have an extraordinary responsibility to help lead this budget process through in a responsible way that will be able to preserve the most important functions that a city has to provide. We'll meet that challenge, just like we've met it in the past. And I know this council will meet this challenge as well. And so I want to thank you, members, in advance for your flexibility, for your diligence, for your discipline in helping to allow this city to survive this crisis. And you have my commitment, and I know all the members of the Budget Finance Committee, that we will take seriously all of your comments today, all of your motions that you've submitted, will give it We'll give it the time and the attention that they are due, and we will work diligently to bring you back the budget and budget changes that will reflect the views of this council. So with that, Madam President, I would ask that we re-refer item number, number one to the committee.
Without objection, that would be the order. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian, for your kind words. I can't say enough about your amazing staff. It's been trying these last two months, but your staff has just been amazing in trying to meet today's goals and bringing the budget to fruition this morning. I also want to just extend my, my thank yous to our city clerk staff, who's been amazing for the last two months, our ITA staff, who's done an incredible job trying to get us online, our staff, our staff from the CAO's office and the CLA's office, we could not have done this without you, including our friends over at the mayor's office. So thank you, everyone, for participating in this and continuing to do our diligence to try to go through these difficult times and do it in a way where we're transparent and we're honest about where we're at. So with that, Madam Clerk, where are we now?
The desk is clear, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, members. Are there any announcements, Mr. O'Farrell? Did you have an announcement?
It's a combination of an announcement and an adjourning in the memory of someone.
Sure, sir, go ahead. You can do both.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Madam President. The announcement and adjournment today is commemorating the life and legacy of Harvey Milk. Harvey Milk is the gay rights activist and pioneer who helped pave the way for the LGBTQ+ community, individuals like myself and Mr. Bonin and Mr. Galperin, to serve in elective office. We also look forward to tomorrow, Friday, May 22nd, is the annual Harvey Milk Day celebration across the country. It's organized by the Harvey Milk Foundation and celebrated each year, as I said, on the 22nd, in the memory of this incredible pioneer who was assassinated in 1978. Harvey Milk was a prominent gay activist during the 20th century. He ran for office three times before his election to the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. This made him the first openly gay person elected to public office in the state of California, one of the earliest in the country. Harvey Milk Day came about as a day to remember and teach about Milk's life and his work to stop the discrimination against gays and lesbians. In California, Harvey Milk Day is recognized by our state's government as a day of special significance for public schools. It was officially established in 2009 after a successful petition process led by gay rights activists Darren I. Ball. And in the wake of the award-winning feature film, Milk, the documentary tracing Milk's life. Even during this pandemic, local organizations and Angelenos are coming forward to ensure that Harvey Milk Day is properly celebrated and acknowledged. The local nonprofit Gay for Good is organizing a food drive this Saturday in your council district, Madam President, in Van Nuys. So folks who are interested in participating can go to gayforgood.org for more information. It's a wonderful organization. They've done all sorts of cleanups and events in my district, and I can't say enough good about this organization. Thanks to all who have worked and who continue to work to keep Harvey Milk's memory alive. We salute you all, and we remember this great American hero and pioneer who helped to uplift and inspire so many people and who opened so many doors for others, including myself, who are privileged to serve on this Los Angeles City Council in the great 13th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Harris Dawson, do you have an adjournment motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is one we had from yesterday and very important, I think, to all of us. It's a man who spent 30 years working for our city in the Department of Transportation, Mr. Curtis Levon Jones. He was born in Mississippi and moved, migrated to Los Angeles, like so many African-American families from the South. He went to LA Trade Tech College, where he earned his electrician's license certificate and also served in the Army Military Reserve at that time. He got a job as a signal systems electrician, where he worked to make sure our lights were coming on and off and before we had this bad traffic like we do now, to make sure the traffic flowed through our city. He married Patricia Hale in 1991, and they were married for some 27 years. He retired from the Army Reserve in 2000, and they had a little one, Lucas Maxwell Josena, who was their pride and joy. He was known as a very generous, a very loving, and a very gregarious person in the community. He received a commendation from this council for, for his service at the 30-year mark. And we are also grateful for the time that he spent with us. He's survived by his wife, his son, Lushdis, his brother Cedric, and Jwan, Jajan, and also cousins and nieces in Nevada, throughout the South, and here in Los Angeles. May he rest in peace and in, recognize our gratitude for him for his life of service to our city.
Thank you, members. Are there any other adjournment motions? Okay, seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
It's down to 42nd Street because while there's, you know, a lot of new development and affordable housing and different things coming in, there's a lot of small businesses there that could just really use a boost.
Well, I'm sure it'd be good. Again, one of these phrases, you know, calming traffic versus slowing traffic. I, is there a difference? Is there any kind of, you know, defining space here?
Traffic calming is, you know, what the definition of that phrase is, is to allow for the flow and access of vehicles and traffic and all users of the street while ensuring that crashes are minimized and reduced so that people are kind of protected, right?